Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White. Mayor Schneider.
Here.
And Mr. White just walked into the room. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda today? Mr. Armstrong. Any other public comment? No. Okay. So, just to talk about what we plan to do this afternoon, there'll be a staff presentation. There's a number of different items for discussion and direction back to staff. Some of those I think are pretty cut and dry, others might take a little longer. And so, we'll have public comment after the staff presentation. What I would suggest at that point is go back and do the type of things like from the Finance Committee and perhaps some of the other recommendations, everything but the enhanced allocation, whatever we're calling it, the service enhancement options. Wait till last and we'll see how much time we have left. Hopefully, we can do that today, but that might take a little longer, but at least the other stuff that we can take care of, I think, today. So, with that, we'll bring it to Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Mario.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Bob Smario, Finance Director. As you know, on April 16th, a few months ago, we presented to the City Council the recommended budget for 2014 and 15. Since then, we've had a number of work sessions with council during which departments presented their respective budgets. We also had the Finance Committee review certain parts of the budget. And so, we are done with that review process and we're here to have, we have three meetings set up today. We have a meeting, of course, and then Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00, and if necessary, Thursday from 9:00 to 12:00. Those meetings are set up for council to discuss and make, give final direction to staff on everything that they've reviewed and everything that's contained within the recommended budget. So, today, we're going to talk about the things that have been reviewed and look for some direction from council. And then, again, as you said, we'll go last, looking at those service enhancement options. So, what we're going to talk about today are the recommendations of the Finance Committee, what they covered in the recommendations. We're also going to get into what are the PERS adopted rate increases, and then talk about the items where council raised certain items, and we're looking for specific direction from council on those. And then, again, lastly, we'll get into consideration of service enhancement options. So, the Finance Committee actually looked at a fair number of topics, different in, for the most part, than what this full council looked at or was presented. We looked at the general fund revenue assumptions in a great amount of detail. We looked at the proposed fee changes citywide, so not just general fund, but all the enterprise funds as well. A couple of staff recommended adjustments that are included in your agenda report. We looked at citywide reserve balances, as well as what we project our general fund to be at the end of this current year. We looked at citywide long-term debt at the request of committee members, as well as unfunded liabilities citywide. And then, the other topic was the impacts of PERS adopted rate increases, and then also the timing of human services funding decisions. The recommendations by the committee were that they recommended the general fund revenue assumptions that we presented. They recommended also the proposed fee changes for the general fund and enterprise funds, and then the few staff recommended adjustments. With regard to the citywide reserve balances, there was no recommendation, it was just informational only, and at some point, we'll probably bring that back to council, probably in connection with our year-end report. Items that the committee recommended, brought back to the full council, were three. One is the impacts of PERS adopted rate increases, which we'll be getting into in a moment, and also a discussion of citywide debt and unfunded liabilities. That we'll cover at a later date, so we won't do that today. And then, thirdly, the timing of human services funding decisions. We will have Ms. Sue Gray here to present that item. The recommendation from the committee was that the council really decide, they should hear it in its entirety. So, we'll start with the PERS adopted rate increases, again, something that the committee felt that the full council should hear, doesn't require any action, but just more informational. And you know, you've heard this before, but in between 2008 and '09, really less than two-year period, PERS, CalPERS, who administers the city's retirement system, as well as most of the city and the state and most counties, they incurred a loss of about $100 billion in that short period of time because of, obviously, the Great Recession. That's a lot of money, obviously, it was about 25% of their assets. It instantly created a large unfunded liability with all agencies, including the city of Santa Barbara. It dropped our funded status to close to, I think, just under 60%, when it was previously, at one point, over 100%. In 2011, PERS instituted a three-year program to increase rates. We talked about that before, and we are now in the third year of that. But what they've come to the conclusion of the board and their actuarial, their staff, actuarial staff, was that their plan for trying to catch up and make up for the loss is not going to do it. They need to do something a lot more dramatic. And as you know, PERS has been under a lot of pressure lately for a number of reasons, about their assumptions and the like. And then, on top of that, Gatsby, who establishes accounting standards and report and disclosure standards, has come up with a new standard that says, "We are going to be required to disclose information about our pension differently than what PERS has in the past has provided to us." It's a little more probably realistic in terms of what assumptions we're required to disclose. And so, I think there was additional pressure on the part of PERS that maybe they need to get better and get their assumptions a little bit more aligned with what people are assuming are more realistic assumptions. So, on April 17th, not too long ago, in 2013, they adopted changes to policies or funding policies. They didn't adopt changes to rates per se. The rate changes are the result of the changes to the policies. One has to do with the period of time that they amortize all the unfunded liabilities. We've talked about what our funding status is today. We have something over $200 million of unfunded liabilities that are going to have to be resolved at some point in time over the long term. And in the past, what they've done with any gains or losses on an annual basis, they would spread them out over time, but generally, they would almost refinance their mortgage, if you will, every year. So, they have a 30-year mortgage to address these unfunded liabilities, but they would refinance them every single year, so it's sort of a rolling 30-year period. And what they've decided to do is to change that to a fixed 30-year period. So, now, we have, we're going to pay this off over a 30-year period, no more sort of kicking it down the road. So, that's a major change to their policies. They're also going to change over the period of time over which they smooth investment gains and losses. Today, they spread over any gains or losses on an annual basis over a 15-year period. And the whole idea was to, when they implemented these policies a number of years ago, were to smooth out the impacts or the volatility, so we don't have ups and downs in our rates because it's tough to budget for those kinds of things. So, they decided a while ago, several years ago, let's adopt some smoothing policies. Well, they're going in a different direction now. They're saying, "We're going to reduce that smoothing idea and say, 'We're going to smooth it over a five-year period versus a 15-year period.'" So, we're narrowing the period in which these gains and losses are going to be amortized. And then, they're also going to eliminate what's called an asset valuation quarter. They used to allow our, their market value of our assets to go up and down and fluctuate without any impact on our rates. They're going to do away with that. Things, they're going to, we're going to see much more of a direct impact on our rates based on what our investments are doing, up or down. So, if we have great investment returns, we're going to see a more immediate reduction in our rates and vice versa. These new policies will be used for the valuation for this current fiscal year, so the valuation as of June 30, 2013, but it will affect the rates starting in fiscal year 2016, and they'll be spread over a five-year period. So, we'll see a prorata and a systematic increase to our rates starting in '16 all the way to 2020. So, the implications, as I sort of alluded to, is that we're going to see a significant increase to our rates starting in '16, and I'll show you what that is in terms of rates as well as dollars. What they're saying, though, is that while it's going to increase the volatility, as I said, because the smoothing period is going to be short, and we're going to see much more volatility up and down, but they believe that when we have, if we ever have another event like we did a few years ago, that the impacts are going to be less. We're not going to see this huge impact on our rates going up if we have another great recession, for example. But we will see, on a general basis, more volatility. What they also believed, and this makes sense, that this will improve the funding levels and put us on a path to being fully funded in 30 years. That's their goal. We talked about the fixed amortization period. Their goal is to, in 30 years, have every single plan be at least 100% funded. And they believe also that in the long term, we're going to see our rates to actually stabilize and actually start to drop, whereas currently, they would not. Important to recognize that the policies that are not affected by these changes are those that relate to the discount rate, what they assume they're going to earn every year in their investments of 7.5%. I know that they are now talking about that, however, this year, they're going to be looking at whether they should change that percentage or not. And as you know, there's been a lot of attention in the media whether this is a realistic number or not. And they're going to be evaluating it from two sides. One is whether they need to adjust their investments to be more conservative. As you know, they invest heavily in the stock market, for example, very volatile. So, they're going to evaluate, should they invest less in the stock market and things that are more conservative? If they make those kind of changes, we will definitely see this assumption of 7.5% go down, because if there's the structure of their investment portfolio is more conservative, they can't expect the same level of return. They're also going to look at whether they just believe that there's been this paradigm shift in the market, that 7.5% is no longer realistic, even if they don't change their investment strategy. It's sort of what the media is saying, that how can you expect, you know, in this new world, we're going to generate 7.5%, even though you're still investing in the same types of securities in the stock market, for example? But that could change this coming year. So, if they adopt any change, it will be effective starting fiscal year 2017, on top of those rate increases we're going to talk about. It's probably a 50/50 chance that they will change that. They're also looking at whether they should make any changes to their assumptions with what they assume salaries are going to go up every year, mortality rates, and the CPI. The one that they're really focusing on is mortality rates. People are just living longer, so that people are receiving benefits for more years. And we, the last time they looked at this, about five years ago, and we've talked about this, they found that public safety finally turned the corner. They're actually living longer statistically than non-public safety employees. So, they have to adjust those rates to comfort the fact that they're going to be paying benefits to these folks for more years. So, where we're at today, using the market value of our assets for the various plans, in total, you can see at the bottom, our crude liability for the first row of numbers for all three plans combined, about $746 million. The market value of our assets as of June 30, 2012, were 500, I'm sorry, as of June 30, 2011, $520 million. So, we have a funding gap of about $226 million, and an average funded debt is a 69%. Better than we were last year, when we saw this last year, we were in the low 60s, and that's because this passed in 2011, they had about a 20% return or even higher than that in one year. A few years after that, it was more like a 2% return. So, again, it could change at any given point in time. So, the three plans that we have at the top, the police sworn, fire sworn, and miscellaneous, what I'm going to show you here is what PERS has provided us, and it's really broad, because they can't tell us yet, they won't until October, tell us what our rates are going to be, that's starting in '16 because of these policy changes. But they've given us some parameters, and it has to do with, really, the size of our plans. The smaller the plan, the more likely we're going to see higher rate increases. The larger the plan, we're going to see smaller increases. So, for example, the police sworn, it's sort of a middle-of-the-road plan. We're expecting, starting in '16, to see a 2.2% increase to our rates from '16 all the way to '20. So, if we start with fiscal 2015, which is 37%, every year is going to go up by 2.2%. And by 2020, it'll be 48%. That's the employer rate. It does not include the portion that the city is paying on behalf of the employees. As you know, there's a 9% employee portion. Currently, the employees, the police are paying 3% of that. So, what I've assumed is that we're going to continue to pay 6% in this year, to the extent we have to, we shift that to our employees, then obviously, the costs will go down. But this assumes that it's the employer rate plus continuing to pay 6% of the employee portion, and again, by 2020 would be 48. And then, for fire, the same analysis, it'd be 51.6%. Theirs would go up 2.8% per year because they're a smaller plan. And then, to the right, the miscellaneous, because it's larger, a larger plan, it'll be up by 1.7. However, employees, as you know, under the cost sharing plan for miscellaneous are paying about a third of that. So, it's going to go up even less than that, because the employees will be taking on a portion of those increases. So, the effective increases are at the bottom for police, the effective increase in rates will be 36%, and then 46% for fire and sworn, and then 30% for miscellaneous.
We have a question from Mr. Mario.
Sure.
Ms. Mario, did you have a question?
I did, but it was on the slide previous.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Smario. So, we're at 69.7% funded. How does that compare with other cities of our size? Are we in good shape, or?
Good, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, good question. When we looked at this last year, based on the 2010 valuation data, we were pretty close to the average. I think we're slightly below the average, but everybody's been impacted, and everybody is probably going to be hovering along with us in any given year.
Okay.
So, we're not unusual at all.
Okay. So, then, going to your next slide, you're comparing the size of the employee unit, and miscellaneous means our service workers, right?
It means everybody but public safety, so everybody but police and fire.
Well, I think we've had this discussion before about a more respectful name for them, because what does that mean, miscellaneous? But, okay, so, that means our, you know, our parks people, our secretarial, custodial, okay.
Labor administration staff, sure.
Everybody else, okay. So, and so, they're in better shape because they're a bigger unit. Is that what you're saying, the 1.7?
Generally speaking, whenever you have any kind of impact to PERS, the larger the plan, the less you're going to see their rate go up, because it's a bigger, the bigger dollars you're dealing with. And it's sort of a measure, the measure of that is what they call the AVR, or Asset Volatility Ratio. So, the higher the ratio, the more likelihood they're going to see higher rate increases for any potential loss, for example, in assets. So, these changes are going to affect cities, and they're measured by the ratio, but it really speaks to how big they are. The bigger the plan, the smaller the rate increase will be. And miscellaneous, relatively speaking, is bigger than both fire and sworn. So, they're going to see a smaller increase per year.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then, Mr. White has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What does the plus 6% mean in the FY 2014 actual across?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, so, the rate is 35%, and I might have misspoke, but the various 35.163% for next year. But as you know, we are currently paying 6% of the employees, 9% for public safety, the employee portion is 9. We are currently paying 6% of that, they're paying the 3. So, all these rates, and again, I didn't speak because we have to, I've assumed that we are going to continue all through '20, which is good or bad assumption, but I assume that what we're doing today is going to continue on through 2020. So, in reality, if that were true, then the rate in 2020 would be 48% plus 6% that we would be presumably paying for the employee portion. So, that's what the 6% is, that's the portion of the employee that the city is paying.
Okay, thank you. And then, the, I think that the 2.2% per year, when I look at this chart, what I'm seeing is an increase of 6-plus percent per year in terms of the, the rate of increase is something on the order of a little over 6%. And I think that folks watching this ought to know that that's where our pension expenses are going up each year. It's not 2.2% per year, it's over 6% per year that our pension liabilities are going up, just on this one metric alone. Thank you.
So, the impact of these increases, and I just wanted to show you what we're paying or what we're budgeting next year. This is just the general fund. We've budgeted $16.8 million by 2020, and this is just a projection, because we won't know our actual rates, but based on what they provided us, we can expect to pay somewhere around $22.4 million in 2020 out of the general fund, which is an effective increase in terms of dollars of 30, almost 34%. This would be impacted, of course, to the negative if they lowered the discount rate as they're considering, or adjusted the mortality rates as they're considering as well, which would affect 2017, starting in '17. And again, these are current dollars, so there's not adjusted for inflation, these are just nominal dollars. Other considerations, so I mentioned that the potential of reducing investment assumption, and I wanted to show this to the committee, because I think it's interesting. These are the rate of returns over the last 20 years that PERS experienced. Their target is 7.5% today. In the past, prior to a couple of years ago, it was 7.34%, but over this 20-year period, they've averaged about 8.2%. So, the fact, it's just so volatile, and the question's going to be whether or not they believe that going forward, that on average, they can achieve a 7.5% or not. But certainly, the past has indicated, at least on an average, they have. But the other point is that it's so hard to predict, because the volatility is so high because of the nature of their investments. And then, I mentioned the mortality rates, what they're going to be looking at as well. So, what this kind of means from a budgetary perspective is, if you think about what our annual revenue growth is per year on average, it's in the 3% to 4% range, even though our bed tax, for example, could be doing 7% or 6%, and our sales tax at 5%. Overall growth, when you talk about all revenues, such as fees and the like, we typically average 3% to 4%. And what these rate increases mean to us, then, is that those increases will consume about 1% per year of our revenue growth, leaving 2% or 3% for other purposes. And this doesn't even account the fact that we have continued increases to our health insurance costs. As you know, we also have upwards pressure on salaries, salaries, and then demands for additional services. So, 1% off the top is going to really just go for PERS rate increases, and we'll be left with the remaining growth, if we get the average, for other impacts or other things that are going on. Any questions on that before we go on to the next topic?
Yes, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Smaro, when you talk about the assumed rate of return, 7.5%, and given the stated unfunded liability, so what would, for example, if they downgraded the return by one point, what would that mean in terms of dollars? Or is that kind of hard to pinpoint?
Well, you know what, I should have brought it. They gave us, in their evaluation report recently, we got in October, they gave us, if, a little table, that if we lowered our discount rate by 25 basis points or by 50 basis points, what would that do to your rates based on your size? It was fairly material. I mean, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't the magnitude we're talking about here, but a 25 basis, 25 basis point reduction in the discount rate, we could see a 1% or 2%, maybe 3% increase to our rates. So, it's, it's an important number because of the power of compounding, and we've talked about the fact that benefits primarily, when somebody retires, are primarily funded from the interest or investment returns versus employer contributions, so two-thirds to one-third ratio. Most of that, it comes from investment returns. So, if they lower that assumption by even 25 basis points, it puts that much more pressure on employers to make up that difference. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. House.
Mr. Smaro, just from a layperson's perspective, it appears that the biggest, out of our, almost out of our control, effect or factor is, are those interest rates and the performance of the investments. And so, when the Fed decides to change their aggressive policy to dealing with maybe inflationary forces as they move forward, rates begin to move up, that's even outside of the, I mean, that's a lifts-all boats kind of a thing on this side of the equation. So, when you're, when we're looking at what we can do here locally, we are, I mean, it seems like we're spitting in the wind, you know? I mean, like this, it's a pretty big wind. So, how effective do you see the things that we're doing here? Of course, negotiation, right? I guess that's the biggest thing, is to make sure we get good agreements with our bargaining units. But aside from that, we're just having to adjust to this, right? We're just having to deal with what comes our way.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, yes, for the most part, I mean, we all sort of live and die by this sword. And what I mean by that is that we recognize that PERS, the things that PERS invests in are by nature volatile, because that's the only way we can even generate something on average of 7.5% per year. But because of that, we definitely are dealing with the volatility of that. We could, as an entire agency, or all the agencies across the state can decide, hey, we want PERS to invest strictly in the kinds of things we invest in here, very safe, secure investments that don't have volatility, but we're going to generate 1% per year, which means that employer rates would have to go through the roof to cover the difference. So, we sort of have to recognize that balance between, you know, do we want to have us pay for most of it, or do we want to have investment returns pay for it? If it's the latter, we have to sort of live with the volatility comes with that. And we are subject to market and what happens in the market, really, the capital market and investment markets as to what kind of returns they really generate.
And in the private sector, a 20-year average 8.2% return on investment wouldn't be considered awful. And yet, because of the volatility, we're living year to year somehow.
That's correct.
And projecting it forwards, that recent volatility, which was so dramatic.
Right.
Is having this impact. But if we were really sitting tight for 20 years and had 8.2% return, we'd be pretty okay.
That's partly true. I would say that the impacts that our rates are also were because of the benefit enhancements that were, that occurred in 2000, roughly 2000.
That's right.
So, that obviously had an impact as well. So, all those forces sort of combined to create these unfunded liabilities. Even what happened in 2001 and '02, you know, when we had the small recession there, that had an impact.
That was a statewide change, too. That was something that happened across the, across the state of California primarily, right? The big rate, the, excuse me, the change with the safety.
I would say that it wasn't sort of all at once, but every agency in the end sort of followed suit with service enhancements or benefit enhancements.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, please continue, thank you.
Okay, so, these are the items that we're going to go through, and then I guess we're going to come back to these at some point, one individually. So, we'll talk about them here quickly. These are items that we're needing specific direction from council. One of them has to do with the waterfront parking lot landscaping. This was an item raised by the Harbor Commission. As you know, the waterfront parking lot landscaping is currently handled by the Parks and Recreation Staff. And the thinking, when this happened about four years ago, was that because the waterfront fund is enjoying the revenues associated with those parking lots, that they should therefore pay for the maintenance of the landscape around those parking lots. And so, that occurs starting, I think, in 2009. So, the Harbor Commission recommended that they, that be done by private contract, that they go out and look, do an RFP, rather than have Parks and Recreation do that. They believe that they can be done cheaper, so that's their motivation. But there is an impact to the Parks and Recreation budget and employees. And from waterfront staff's perspective, they are satisfied with the services, and particularly with the recent storm and wind events, they found that they're very responsive, and so, they're not unsatisfied with the services. So, from staff's perspective, we're not recommending any changes to this current arrangement. And then, with regard to Creeks funding for street sweeping, the Creeks Advisory Committee, who also reviewed the Parks and Recreation budget and Creeks budget, they recommended freezing the funding currently that's being provided by the Creeks Fund for the street sweeping program. It started about five years ago, at $150,000, and we've been increasing it by CPI every year. And so, for 2014, or for the current year, I'm sorry, it's $191,000, and they recommend freezing it at the 2013 levels moving forward, so it doesn't go up anymore by a CPI.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, the 191-plus would, that's on this year's budget, is this going forward for the, for the next year? Staffs, what we've looked at so far, has had that number, or has it had a bigger number?
Yeah, good question. So, for 2014, you would take that 191 and add a CPI to it. I don't know what the exact number is.
Couple percent, whatever.
Yeah, exactly. So, this is 2013's number, this is what they recommend to freeze it at.
Okay. And then, the Creeks revenue, however, rose how much?
Well, yeah, the Creeks Fund is funded almost entirely from the bed tax. They're portioning the 2% of the 12. And so, just like with the general fund, I think, year-to-date, they're in the 6% range, you know, growth from last year.
And increase in revenues.
So, anyway, so at any point, what is staff, what staff's recommending is that we not make any changes today, but that we look at this, because it's a little more complicated. The street sweeping fund has got a commercial component and a residential component. It's being funded from three sources, from parking citations that were on the street sweeping days. It's funded from, in part, from the streets fund, it's also funded in part by the Creeks Fund. So, we want to look at the whole sort of program and see how the funding sources shake out, shake out, and then come back to you with a recommendation rather than making a change today. At least that's staff's recommendation on this. And then, the MTD shuttle bus, as you know, there is a shortfall currently of about $40,000. We contractually provide funding to MTD, it's about $1.2 million per year. However, we rely on the revenues from the shuttle bus, the Fairbox revenues. We estimate $190,000 this year, and we're expecting we're going to be short by 40,000. And so, we have a funding gap. This year, we're going to find a way to solve that gap. For next year, I know that MTD came, was here, and they said that they would be willing to do away or at least not get that $40,000 shortfall and that they can manage without it. But what's, what staff's recommending at this point, in light of all the options that were presented to council, that we kind of step back and come back with a recommendation based on a, on an evaluation and perhaps have a council meeting with, a joint meeting with council and MTD Board to discuss some of these options that have been presented to you, as well as many other options that may be out there. So that's what staff's recommending at this point. And then the Councilmember Rouse's proposal has to do with the funding for the state street landscaping and sidewalk maintenance. As you know, currently, it's about a $600,000 contract that goes, we pay to the Downtown Organization for Maintaining State Streets Sidewalks and Landscaping. Half of that is paid for by the Parks and Recreation Department, $300,000, and the other half is paid for by the Downtown Parking Fund. The proposal is that the Creeks, the Creeks Fund support 2/3 of that contract, or $400,000, and do so by transferring that money into the Parks and Recreation Department. The net impact to the Parks and Recreation Department is that they would pay $200,000 from what they're, in total, so it'd be a reduction of $100,000 from what they're paying today. And then that $100,000 therefore could be used to reestablish services. And then in the downtown parking, they would no longer be paying for any of those cleaning services, but they would therefore, they would be able to dedicate $200,000 of that savings to its capital program. And then also use the $100,000 in savings to increase shuttle support to the MTD by that $100,000. One of the items that was raised by Councilmember Francisco had to do with the timing of human services funding decisions. We presented some options to the Finance Committee, and they, as I said, recommended that the full council consider this. And I believe Sue Gray is here, and she will present to the council the same presentation she made to the Finance Committee.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sue Gray, Community Development Business Manager. I'm here to talk to you about the timing of the human services funding. This was presented to Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee asked that it be heard by the full council. So I'm going to give you a little background and a little history, and it might seem like we're taking a little walk down memory lane, but in order for you to understand how it's evolved, I think it's necessary. So as you know, the city of Santa Barbara has a committee, a council-appointed Community Development and Human Services Committee. And they are responsible for recommending funding to City Council for two different pots of money. The first is the Federal Community Development Block Grant Funds. We are an entitlement jurisdiction from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 14. Actually, these numbers are outdated as of this point because we just heard we're getting more money, so I will ignore the numbers for now. 65% of our entitlement can go to capital, 20% to administrative, and 15% to public services. And then the city also makes available general fund monies for human services programs. And for fiscal year 14, that is going to be $628,256. The current funding process that we use, we combine the Community Development Block Grant Funds with the Human Service Funds. And those are, there's one single application for human and public services. We add those two monies together, the 15% from CDBG Public Service and the city's human services. And then there's a very similar application with a few other capital-related questions in it for the CDBG capital monies. We have one advisory committee that interviews, reads all the applications, interviews all the applicants, and makes recommendations to council. And there's one council, one council action item. Prior to 1996, the city had two separate allocation processes. There were two committees. We had a Community Development Task Force that dealt with the Community Development Block Grant Funds, and then a Human Services Advisory Committee for the City General Fund Human Services. There were two separate council actions required, and they had different contract periods. CDBG was on a July to June. It's always been July to June. That's how our contract is with HUD. And human services contract period was October through September. So prior to 1996, council would approve and adopt the amount of money for human services during their regular budget process. And then the contracts, that's why the contracts would be October through September, so there was time to get those done. The downside of doing it this way was that there was a duplication of staff effort, the duplication of applicants, a lot of applicants would actually apply for both pots of money. So in the, you know, different people reviewing it, it was hard to decide who to give it to. And it was an inefficient use of volunteer committee member time. Starting in 1996, the city decided to do a combined allocation process. So the human services schedule that used to be October, yeah, October 1st, was changed to July 1st. In order to do that with the city's budget, the human servicing, human service funding was approved one full year in advance. So for instance, for fiscal year 14, that pot of money would already be in the fiscal year 13 budget. It would have been approved with the fiscal year 13 budget. And then it's just, it was carried over and allocated in the next fiscal year. The benefit of doing the process this way was that it saved time for staff. It saved the volunteers' time and the nonprofits' time. So the combined application had a benefit. The downside was that the human service funding was appropriated a full year in advance. And the accounting of it, the carryover, was confusing. It always looked like in the human services budget, we had double the money that we really had. Since 2005, we use the same process, the same combined funding process. However, the, the timing of the CDB, of the human services funding changed. Council now makes a commitment in October, commits the funds in October. The distribution of the committed funds are approved in March. And then the formal approval, actually by council, is not done until the budget process. So if you'll recall, you made the commitment of human service funds back in October. You authorized the distribution of those funds in March when staff came to you with all the committee's recommendations. The money is, has not been actually appropriated yet. It won't be appropriated until the budget is adopted by council. So it's kind of like a plan was put into place, and now with the budget process, it will be acted on. The benefits of changing the timing of the human service funding was that there were no carryover or accounting issues. The, the actual decision of the amount of money to allocate to human services was closer to the allocation period. And it made the process a little clearer for the Community Development Human Services Committee. So they knew if they wanted to ask council for more money, they knew they could do it this year, and it wasn't, you know, a whole year before. It's, it was easier to see what was going on during that year. The downside is it's out of sync with the overall budget discussions. So why does CDBG rule the timing of the applications? The CDBG deadlines are what drive the process. When we combined the two funding, funding processes, we couldn't really just stay with the human service one and do it the way the city had done it because we're under some statutory deadlines for the Community Development Block Grant Funds. Our, our action plan is due on May 15th to HUD, and the action plan is essentially our application to HUD to get, to receive the monies. In order to do that, we have to have a 45-day public review of our draft action plan. And so that needs to be available to the public by April 1st. And in order for that to happen, we need council approval prior to April 1st for the CDBG funds. And since we do a combined application process, that includes the human service funds. So staff has looked at it and identified five different options, and I'm going to go through each of these one at a time. The first option is to keep the process as it is. Council can already change the allocation during the budget process if it's needed. The potential for changes is already reflected in agency contracts. Every contract says that the funding is subject to funds available by council. The downside of this would be if council had to change or decided to change the funding amount between October and the budget period, there would be added steps. The Community Development Human Services Committee would need to make another recommendation, and council would have to approve those changes again. Option number two is to return to the previous method of approving the human service funding one year in advance. This is a doable option. However, the downside is, as I said before, it's hard to adjust if financial changes occur in the intervening year because you've actually adopted and appropriated the funding for the next year. It's not just a plan anymore. It's an actual adoption of money. Third option would be to separate CDBG and human service process. Takes us way back to the way things were done. Staff is not really recommending this option. It's doable, but it, the downside is it's increased work for staff and volunteers. The transition would be difficult, and there would be a three-month funding void that we would have to deal with, July through September. Option four, staff explored changing the CDBG grant year. Right now, we're on a July to June contract, and we looked at changing the, our contract period from October, to October through September. I contacted our HUD rep, and she said that it is possible to do that, but she does not recommend it. And it's, she said it was very risky financially due to statutory deadlines. For instance, since we have to have our action plan, right now it's due by May 15th. It would be due by August 15th. And statutorily, CDBG, the drop deadline, deadline date for getting your action plan in is August 16th. And so that's, gives you one day for errors or anything to happen. And it's basically, like right now, we, this year, we submitted our action plan late because we didn't know what our funding was. And that's really just a staff-to-staff discussion, you know, it doesn't need approval by anyone. But this August 16th date is a drop-dead date statutorily. She said if you don't have your action plan in by then, you don't get your money, period. There's no, nothing. And then there would be transition difficulties, and then also the three-month funding void from before. Option five is to keep the cycle as it is now, but add some contingencies, similar to the contingencies that the committee does for CDBG funds. The benefit is there would be a plan in place in case funding changes from the time in March when the, when the grants are approved by council and when the budget is adopted in June. The downside of that could be that there might be extra pressure from nonprofits during the budget process. Right now, they all come and talk to you in March during the public hearing, and then they feel that, you know, their, their amount is set and it's done. And if there were chances that it would change between the two, they might come to you and ask for more money or, you know, want to talk about that. So that's basically it. I think staff would recommend either keeping it the same, option one, or option five, keeping it the same but adding a contingency, which we already do for CDBG.
Any questions at this point? Thanks.
So, okay, so I think because the service enhancement options are going to be a little more involved in terms of a discussion, is why don't we open it up for public comment? If you are here about one of the service enhancement options, you're welcome. And I'll see if any questions from council first before we go there. But if you, if you're here for any enhancement options, you're welcome to speak at this point, but I'll open it up again after the staff presentation for the service enhancement options if you want to speak at that point. So you're welcome to stay, but I'm giving you a chance to speak and leave if you want to as well. And my mic's on? Yeah? No? Okay. So first, is there any questions or anything at this point from council before I open it up to public comment? No? Okay. If you want to say anything, now is your chance before I open up to public comment. So, yeah, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for indulging me. I thought I'd try to explain where I was going with the proposal regarding the Measure B funds. I've received a fair amount of letters, not all of them complimentary, but certainly passionate nonetheless. And I do actually appreciate them because I do share your passions. I wanted to clear up some of the, there's some points of misunderstanding and some points of misinformation. As we try to wrap up these budget processes today and try to serve the greater community good, you know, most issues that we deal with in the budget have some relationship to each other. But it is important to recognize the intentions and the restrictions and the appropriate application of fund resources. Measure B itself was passed in 2000 with a decisive majority. And I know that because I was part of that decisive majority, myself and a few other folks from the business committee were recruited by Harriet Miller to try to help sell this program to a rather skeptical business community. The business community was skeptical because they felt like this could put us at a competitive disadvantage with surrounding jurisdictions having a higher bed tax. But what was also apparent at the time was we had clean water issues and we had beach closure issues. And those also impacted business and our overall perception as an environmental community. So it was decided that we would go forward with this and support it from both the environmental and the business community aspects. One of the tangible aspects of the proposal was actually the re-establishment of a dormant street sweeping program. That was one of the selling points from the business community's standpoint. Measure B's language includes "fund programs to improve the quality of storm waters and other surface waters discharged into the Pacific Ocean to carry out creek restoration improvements, and for projects or programs to improve the quality of onshore, offshore waters." So now, with this being said, the business community and the environmental community are one. They're joined by mutual interest to promote Santa Barbara as both an environmental destination and to be able to profit so that these programs can be perpetually funded. A clean environment equals enhanced bed taxes equals sustainable environmental programs. It was a win-win, and it won decisively. I think it was 72% or something along those lines, a tremendous victory. And since that time, Creeks funds have been leveraged brilliantly, in my opinion, to great advantage and have resulted in observable improvements. I think Mr. Benson pointed out last time the amount of money that we leverage for grants based on our own capital input, and it's pretty impressive. Creeks functions under the auspices of Parks and Rec. Plaza maintenance is also a state street, or plaza maintenance is also known as state street cleaning. It's also a Parks and Rec program, and is performed by the Downtown Organization but overseen and administered by the Parks and Rec Department. Comes out of their budget. And a few years back, in an attempt to relieve Parks and Rec from some of its burden, $300,000 was diverted from an enterprise fund, otherwise known as the Parking Fund, to help pay for this program. Now, parking faces currently a long-term CIP deficit as well as increased policy reserve requirements due to our taking over the ownership of these parking structures. But parking does recognize a relationship between public transit and parking operation. And currently, it pays over $400,000 annually to that end. MTD is currently looking at diminished shuttle services due to budgetary pressures. So where parking relief is non-related expense, it could conceivably enhance its contribution to alternative transportation. Parking recognizes that the Park One's Ride program is good for the community in general. So now we're out on the fringes of the planet. We're out in, in, in Randyland here, so we'll go back to what we're talking about. If in the future, somehow, street sweeping and state street or downtown corridor sidewalk cleaning were to be defunded, in my opinion, would have a direct effect on the missions and on the effectiveness of the Creeks programs. Both programs serve to remove a lot of the solids and the oils from storm runoff water. The language of the ballot initiative is generally worded as to provide some latitude for discretionary bodies such as Creeks Advisory to steer their funds in the most advantageous direction. The Permian Bowl parking projects replace what would normally be a general fund obligation but provide tremendous benefits in terms of storm water filtration and future maintenance, something that may not have been possible had the language been overly restrictive or poorly interpreted. The decisions, however, should not be made from the top down by a governmental body or your elected officials, even if the actual voter-approved language could be so interpreted, such as the example, of course, with downtown parking, which it did happen at the top down. My interest is in respecting the spirit of the effort and not trying to parse language or interpret voter intent. I have no interest in using Measure B funds for unrelated programs. That's not what I'm trying to do. I would therefore, Madam Mayor, I'd like to strike my proposal in favor of a future discussion, perhaps at the Finance Committee level, as mentioned by staff, talking about recommendations for street sweeping and whatnot going forward. And if the Finance Committee would meet and maybe involve the interested parties. Because bed taxes have been trending up for some time, and they have very, a very predictable windfall amounts are on the horizon, probably one of the few things you can say is probably really going to happen, given all the projects about to come online. Perhaps an interesting discussion can be entertained in the future about a collaborative effort and hopefully help the rising tide float all the pertinent boats. And that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for your indulgence.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this point from council before we go to public comment? Okay, so just as a reminder, if you're here for the service enhancements, you're welcome to speak at this time, but you can wait, and we'll reopen public comment for that portion of the presentation. But if you want to speak now, you can. But on everything else, if you want to speak, because we'll make some decisions after this round of public comment on the other items that you just heard up to this point, now is your time to speak. Okay? Hopefully that makes sense. We have two minutes here at the podium. We're going to start with Betsy Kramer, be followed by Bill Mahan. And Bill, if you want to wait, just let me know or come on up.
Good afternoon. I am Betsy Kramer, Chair of the Harbor Commission, a member of its Budget Subcommittee, and that includes Commissioners Kelly and Sloan, both of whom are here today. I was very surprised by the staff report. At our March 21st Full Harbor Commission meeting, we voted not to contract out the landscape. At our March 21st full Harbor Commission meeting, we voted not to contract out the landscaping, as the staff report says, but instead to get competitive bids on the cost of waterfront landscaping services. This was a unanimous vote of all seven of us, no hesitation, no disagreements. Part of the Harbor Commission's general function is to consider annual Harbor Department budgets and make recommendations. We are conscientious about that. We fine-tooth comb the budget, making suggestions, always appreciating the department's responsiveness. And as an enterprise fund, the waterfront department's sources of income are limited. And there's, of course, a balance with outgo, adding to one has effects on others. Ever since I've been on the Harbor Commission, there's, there's been discussion about the approximately $238,000 paid to the general fund parks by the Enterprise Fund waterfront. We have asked regularly for this to be looked at, to see if the landscaping work could be done for less, whether by the waterfront staff or outsourced. In fact, this Harbor Commission request goes back years. In an editorial in the May 29, 2005 News Press, it was noted the cost of landscaping was $107,000, and Mr. Armstrong was reported as saying it was not then time to look at outside bids. We are always told, not now. This year, it seemed again to us to be the time to look into the landscaping question, and that's all we asked for with our motion. Competitive bids, taking into consideration all the possible unusual stamp damage, storm damage, for instance, involved in landscaping parking lots and public access property. It's our advisory role to look at these details at the waterfront, including the landscaping, to ask questions and as a-
You wind up, please?
I shall. And as the Commissioner said at the meeting, to let the council know how we feel. That's what we did. That's what I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Kramer, Mr. White has a question.
Your, the, the Commissioner's proposal is, the recommendation is that bids be obtained, but that, but that the work not get contracted out?
We don't make any recommendation on that. That would depend upon the bids and upon what the waterfront staff decides or, or you decide for that matter. It's only to get, to look for bids.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Mahan, be followed by John Lynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Bill Mahan. I'm the President of the Courthouse Legacy Foundation. As you know, the Board of Supervisors has, have entrusted us, our foundation, with the conservation and restoration of the courthouse. We had a historic structures report completed last year, $80,000 report, and it, it, it told us that we should, we should restore the mural room as soon as possible. So we are embarking upon that particular endeavor. We can't, we, we need the room for five months and we can't get it until January 2nd, 2015 because the room is so popular. It's booked up until then. But we are going to start in January 2015, and, and the project will cost $700,000. Now, we've already raised over $300,000 in cash and, and pledges, substantial pledges. And I think that that tells you that the private sector is very, very interested in our courthouse. And we think that the county and the city should be partners in that particular endeavor. And so I'm here today to ask for $10,000 to go into our fund. We will begin the work January 2nd, 2015. Is there any questions?
Question, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mahan. Could you describe for the public what the restoration will mean? $700,000 seems like a big figure. I assume we're talking about cleaning all the paintings, is that correct?
Thank you. The paintings were cleaned after the smoke damage a couple of years ago. And at that time, the, the lady, the conservator that cleaned them said we should, we should restore the painting as soon as possible. It's, it's 84 years old and it's never, it's never been done. So the painting needs to be restored. Up at the top, it's blistering off, cracks are opening up, it's chipping, it's, there's all kinds of things that are happening to it, and that was all defined in our historic structures report. Also, the drapes were damaged by the smoke, and, and they have to be relined. The leather on this, on the benches is cracking and splitting. The windows need to be redone. The ceiling was not touched at all when they cleaned the, the mural. So we have the whole, there's ironwork, there's the chandeliers, it, it's the whole room. And we do have a, we do have a very substantial contingency in our estimate, a 25% contingency, because this is artwork, and it's, it's not easy to estimate what it's going to be, but that's, that's why it's $700,000.
Well, I completely agree that it's one of the gems in our crown, for sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. White also has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, Mr. Mahan, you have been going to private foundations seeking these funds, and coming here today. In the past, for example, you, the Spirit of the Ocean Fountain is a successful project, which at that point had Santa Barbara City Redevelopment Agency funding. Could you describe the importance of city direct participation as you've gone to these other foundations?
Well, the, you know, whenever we talk to, whether it's private, I mean, a foundation is just a, a board of private citizens. And, and so when we get money from either a foundation or a private contributor, it's always the same thing. And they always ask, is government involved in this? This is a government building. And a lot of people don't understand that the county really doesn't have the expertise nor the funding to do the kind of art and architecture restoration that we, that the Courthouse Legacy Foundation specializes in. The Spirit of the Ocean Fountain, the city gave $25,000 to that. The county contributed $175,000 to that project, and the whole project was almost $800,000. So we got, we got a good partnership with city and county government for that particular project.
That that did have repercussions or, or influence as you went to these other foundations to pick up the other two-thirds of the funding?
Absolutely. We had, we had the commitments from the city and the county before we went to the Heine Foundation, for instance, and Greg Heine was very, very interested in, in, is the city and the county going to be partners on this? And, and he eventually wrote a check for $180,000 toward it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahan. No other questions? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
John Lynn will be followed by Zoe Taylor. Mr. Lynn? No. Zoe Taylor will be followed by Margie Yahweh. Yep. Is Margie here?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and staff. First of all, I was here before with your budget session, but I'd like to share with you because the Visitor Center has just approved their new mission statement, and that is to provide, provide a warm and friendly welcome to visitors showcasing our heritage and the ambiance that is Santa Barbara, to enhance their experience by providing information that will maximize their enjoyment and encourage return visits. So I wanted to share that with you. In addition to the packet that I gave you the last time, we just got some new information from the waterfront department, and 97% of the visitors that come through the cruise ships now are staying in Santa Barbara. And I will tell you, with the numbers that are happening at the Visitor Center, I think they're all coming through the Visitor Center. One of the very interesting things that Anne Marie shared with me today is also a part that I didn't share with you last time, that many of our local folks also use the Visitor Center. She right now has packets made for some local folks here who are wanting to have weddings, reunions, they're for their guests and meetings. So the Visitor Center is putting a lot of packets, not only for our visitors, but also for our local folks. I also wanted to share with you that at our last meeting, I couldn't say that we had this, but we've been informed by the airport, that we've been approved by the Airport Commission for the Visitor Center to run the concierge desk at the airport. And this is going to be very awesome. We are targeting, we're having meetings next week. We're targeting to get that up running early July. And of course, we will have to support the rest of the region, but the focus will bring those folks here to Santa Barbara, so the Visitor Center is expanding that. And our new CEO, Ken Oplinger, he's at another appointment right now, but hopefully you come in, you'll get to meet him. He is signing, going to be signing that agreement here very shortly, and we'll be working with the folks that we're going to hopefully have the touchscreen info board, not only at the Visitor Center-
You need to wind up, please.
But we're looking at that. So I hope that you will consider our proposal, and thank you very much.
Thank you. We've got a question from Mr. House.
Ms. Taylor, thank you very much for coming and explaining that, but let's just be sure we understand the proposal. So you're proposing an additional?
$11,000.
$11,000.
Yeah, I just want to hear it out loud. It's $11,000, and that'll be going to support the Visitor Center's operations.
That's correct. And Mr. House, what that is, is because we are having more and more visitors coming, that Anne Marie is needing more volunteers and more staff. She just, this last week, had to hire more staff to cover that. Plus, it is now, and now she spends about 11.5 hours per cruise ship. We had 11 ships this spring and another 11 scheduled for next fall. So her workload is getting more and more, and the exciting part is, is so many of those folks are coming back to Santa Barbara.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Does Mar, I think Margie, she'll be back for the other part two of public comment. Michael Gutierrez? Yes, come on up. And then Leslie Wiscombe.
Hi. Thank you for, for this opportunity. My name is Mike Gutierrez. I'm an officer for Santa Barbara City College Club Metta. And I'm here to, just to propose or just bring more attention, to invest more time into, like, after-school programs, to incorporate mentor programs slash apprentice for the youth. And, and also to utilize more of our resources such as the public library and our city college since it's got rated number one. And with, and just more of that, of that manner, just to conserve more time, energy to, to the youth, since today I've been under pressure and that the, the funding's just been catering to the tourism and not so much time to the community. So I would like to see more energy dedicated to the community, to the youth specifically, and more directly to the Hispanic population. Thank you.
Leslie Wiscombe will be followed by Lee Muldaver.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yep, absolutely. Mr. Muldaver? You'll be followed by Paul Hernandy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Lee Muldaver, a city resident representing the Santa Barbara Creeks and Watersheds Advisory Committee. Our chair is unable to attend this afternoon because of work and has asked me to convey our recommendation on Mr. Rouse's proposal, which it seems is now temporarily tabled. And that was be unanimously from our committee, not to go forward with this recommendation. And this is a city council that tremendously supports the downtown, and of all the people in the room, I can't think of anybody who's supported it longer or better than Councilman Rouse. But to me, we were searching, and I want to thank Councilman Hotchkiss, our liaison, for coming to our meeting last week. We, we were searching for some area of nexus between the language in the ballot measure that was put to the voters, which said that Measure B shall be used for water creek, beach quality, and improvement projects. The language that was there from the city attorney at the time, Mr. Wallace, that said it shall be used for these purposes. And the proposal to reallocate some of the Measure B money to enhance the ambiance of the downtown, which is a very worthy goal. I spend a lot of time there. We all do. But some people in the council may be unaware, as members of the public are, that there are a lot of studies that actually indicate that the effect of the regular street sweeping and landscaping and power washing of the sidewalks, while it makes the ambiance of the downtown better, actually makes the water quality in the creeks and watersheds and the coast and the beaches worse. So while it's a plus for the downtown, it appears to be completely at odds with the intent of Measure B that was put to the voters.
You need to wind up, please.
Sure. Finally, since this week is the one-year anniversary of the passing of Naomi Schwartz, I remember when I was talking to her as the head of the Gilde Foundation, she was not only very pleased when Measure B was passed, but she was very concerned about the erosion of public credibility locally and nationally in government and how government uses restricted funds that taxpayers and businesses entrust to them.
Thank you.
And I think that this is an example.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse has a question. Mr. Muldaver?
Mr. Muldaver, yeah, thank you. I wanted, I was, I was curious because I saw that in a number of letters for the detrimental effects of street sweeping and power washing. But in both cases currently, those waters are recovered and not allowed to go down the storm drains. Is that, is that the issue or is another issue that I'm missing?
Councilman Rouse, the contract says that the waters will be recovered, and the State Water Quality Control Board says that the waters will be recovered. However, if you were to come downtown at 5:00 or 6:00 or 7:00 Saturday or Sunday morning, you would see, as is the case in many cities in California and other parts of the United States, that large percentages of the water under the present contract group are not being retained, and they actually are going into the storm drains, which means that they're not going through the sewer treatment system, they're going into the creeks, onto the beaches, and into the ocean. And so I, I'm, I'm really grateful that you extended this conversation forward because I think it'll give everyone opportunity to get more information and come at a good goal from a factually-based position.
Yeah, thank you. I will look into that.
Thank you.
Paul Hernandy will be followed by James Hawkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. I am Paul Hernandy, speaking for the Citizens Planning Association. And I am also personally, and I am sure our entire board, very grateful that the proposal by Councilmember Rouse is, seems to be put on, on a table from which, of course, it can always be moved. But I would like to mention that we urge you to remain committed to the intended use of the revenue source, which was overwhelmingly approved by the voters as Measure B 13 years ago. As you know, Measure B 2000 was intended to protect the city's creeks and the quality of water running through the creeks into the ocean. For this huge task, a 2% surcharge was added to the already existing 10% hotel occupancy tax, which are known with many other revenue sources, has continued to be available to the city for other purposes. We are alarmed that somehow the Measure B funds might be used in a less direct way to keep the water clean in the creeks and eventually in the ocean. We believe that all Measure B funds should remain an integral part of the Creeks Division's annual budget. The Creeks Division's expert staff has typically put the funds to excellent use, often managing to leverage them to attract additional outside grant support for creek restoration. Please consider that the future of our creeks would be far less bright if you consented to giving Peter what is rightfully Paul's. And I'm saying this not only because my first name happens to be Paul. Thank you.
James Hawkins will be followed by Hillary Howser.
Mayor Schneider and members of the council, my name is James Hawkins. I'm a policy analyst at Heal the Ocean. I'm here to get today to give brief remarks on the recommendations for creek funding of the street sweeping program. Heal the Ocean has been a strong supporter of the expansion of the street sweeping program with the help of Measure B funds. The program has removed an enormous amount of trash and debris from our city's streets, which has helped keep our creeks clean and are, improve our ocean water quality. And while this program has been very successful, we fully support the Creeks Advisory Committee and city staff's recommendations to examine and evaluate the city's street sweeping efforts in order to ensure that we get the greatest water quality bang for our buck. Heal the Ocean is eager to help support this effort and the continued success of this program in any way possible. Thank you.
Hillary Howser will be followed by Brian Trotwine.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Hillary Howser, Heal the Ocean, thank you for the opportunity to speak. You've already received our letter about the, against the proposal to transfer the $400,000 per year of Measure B fund to Parks and Rec. So I won't rehash those. I'm glad to hear from some of you in response to those remarks. Today, Heal the Ocean was a modest proposal- Today, Heal the Ocean was a modest proposal of our own. If some on the council believe that power washing downtown sidewalks is appropriate use of Measure B fund, then surely funding Heal the Ocean's effort to improve local water quality would be a good use of Measure B funds. Procuring funds for Measure B would be a boon to our organization. We would be able to spend less time on fundraising and more time on our critical water quality work. And so, anyway, the point being is that we're not proposing this, really, but we can't support initiative for the same reason we can't support Mr. Rouse's proposal before you, now. It would be wholly, completely inappropriate use of Measure B money to fund an existing program which has financial support that's otherwise available. The purpose of Measure B is to improve water quality, and we cannot and will not continue to make progress on that most important goal if Measure B is used to backfill existing city program or even local nonprofits. So we hope you'll maintain the excellent stewardship of past councils, set an example for future ones by opposing this use of Measure B funds. And we ask you to make the decision now and not defer it to the finance committee, that this goes on and on and on. So I really appreciate, I appreciate your openness to working with the environment groups on this issue and just say no. Thank you.
Brian Troutwine will be followed by Megan Diaz-Ali. Megan, excuse me.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and council members. I'm Brian Troutwine with the EDC. Fifteen years ago, our beaches were closed, creeks were polluted. It was an emergency. Even wading into the water could make people sick. Santa Barbara had a reputation in the media and was associated with beach close signs. Tourism was threatened. Thanks to Measure B, conditions have improved, but our work's not done. We must remain vigilant lest we return to these times of dirty water. We're here to ask you to uphold Measure B, the guidelines, the ordinance, and the voters' wishes, when 72% voted for the measure. Councilman Rouse's proposal, and now his new proposal, to defer this matter to the finance committee would turn Measure B and the voters' intent on their heads. The councilman has responded, saying there's been some confusion. This proposal reflects confusion about Measure B. The guidelines are clear. Measure B was not to pay for existing city services. That is why this, that is exactly what this proposal would do, by supplanting funding for the downtown organization. Using money from the Clean Water Fund to pay for street sweeping, I'm sorry, state street landscaping and irrigation, parade setup, the downtown org salaries and rent, graffiti abatement and flag hanging is not what the voters had in mind. Measure B is not a slush fund. The regional board considers power washing a threat, not a benefit, to clean water. Last week, the city received a complaint about polluted runoff from power washing entering the gutters. There was no containment. Mr. Rouse likens power washing to street sweeping, but street sweeping, unlike power washing, does not use water, so polluted water does not run off into the gutters. There's a big difference there. Please do not reopen these guidelines and do not defer this to the finance committee. The guidelines were unanimously adopted in 2003, when the voters' intent was still fresh in our minds. The 2003 Council agenda report states in italics what the intent was, and it was not to replace funding for existing programs. Many of us worked on that campaign. We spoke with thousands of residents. Their intent was and remains clear. It's all about clean water. So in closing, thirteen years later, we should not be second-gassing the voters' intent. Please reject this dirty water proposal and do not reopen the Measure B guidelines and do not defer this to the finance committee. Let's put an end to this today. Thank you.
Megan Diaz-Ali will be followed by Eddie Harris.
Hi, Madam Mayor, council members. As a, my name is Megan Diaz-Ali. I'm a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. And it was a bit concerning to learn last minute about Mr. Rouse's proposal to the already-approved Parks and Recreation budget. And so I'm here to ask you to vote no on the proposal to redirect $4,000 per year away from the Creeks Division. I'm reminding you that in 2000, 72% of the voters did approve Measure B, setting aside TOT revenues for creek restoration and clean water projects. And it just, you know, undermines the moral contract that, that you have set forth by the voters. And I applaud you, Mr. Rouse, for listening to the concerns of the citizens and your constituents. And I just would appreciate if the council would just set forth a vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Eddie Harris will be followed by Jeffrey Young.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Eddie Harris. I'm president of Santa Barbara Urban Creeks Council, and I'm here today to urge you to not take Measure B funds to use for the purpose that's been proposed, because it doesn't contribute or help with water quality or environmental issues at the beach and in our creeks and streams. The Creeks Division has made some great strides over, over the years using Measure B money. And I'm happy with, with most of the things they've done, maybe not all of them, but I'm pretty happy with most of the things they've done, and I think they've made a lot of progress. But there's still a lot more work that they need to do. And to begin to, to take money from their budget would be unwise, in my opinion. And I, I hope that the rest of you will see, see it that way as well. It's, it's a, it's a good program, and it should not be tampered with. The funding should be left intact. Thank you very much.
Jeffrey Young will be followed by Daniel McCarter. And then the final speaker for this round will be David Landecker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and members of the council. My name is Jeff Young. I'm a thirty-year resident of Santa Barbara and a practicing attorney in town for the last twenty years. I am one of the signatories to Measure B that put it on the ballot. I've also been the chair of the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board for the past eight years and have been on the board for the last thirteen years. In that capacity on the water board, I have reviewed countless dozens of storm water management plans submitted by the municipalities in the Central Coast region, which stretches from San Bernardino County down to the border with Ventura and Santa Barbara County and inland thirty miles. This includes Monterey County, San Luis Obispo County, and Santa Barbara County. Not once have sidewalks been identified as a source of contamination in an applicant storm water management plan. Federal EPA and State Water Resources Control Board documents do not identify sidewalks as a source of contamination of storm water. The nexus between Measure B funds and the use of these funds is not the beautification of Santa Barbara, nor is it for paying for maintenance of public property that the city is obligated to pay for on an ongoing basis. While I support Mr. Rouse's efforts, and I do support them, because I like having a beautiful Santa Barbara, and I like having the sidewalks clean, I support that. I do not support moving funds that have been earmarked by voters for a specific purpose in improving surface water quality that affects creeks and beaches, to the cleaning of sidewalks, and other needs that will not improve water quality. Please don't violate the will of the voters. Do not send this to the finance committee for the reason that ultimately this body is going to interpret whether these funds can be used or not for the requested purpose. And it's quite clear to me that it is just an inappropriate use of funds in this way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Landecker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I appreciate Mr. Rouse's effort to withdraw this motion before the council and to push it off to the finance committee. I suggest, however, that the best thing you can do is not defer consideration of it, but just kill the issue right now. This is not the first time I've come before you on an effort to divert Measure B funds. This has happened over and over, and it will probably happen more. Very simply, back in the days when this went on the ballot, when Measure B was on the ballot, the opposition to the measure, their ballot argument said very clearly that what will happen if this passes is that the council will divert the money for other purposes. And so you're not voting for clean water, you're voting for something else. And a very clear statement had to come from the council and from the proponents that said, no, these monies will be used for clean water and for nothing else. And for all the reasons that you've heard, as much as we appreciate clean sidewalks, as much as all of us appreciate the work that is being suggested, these aren't the right funds. These funds come from visitors to our community. We take their money for a very specific purpose. And as much as there are so many things that we would love to do with that money, there are so many things that need to be done, we made a very specific commitment to the voters. And that was that this money was going to be used for clean water and clean creeks. That's where the money ought to be allocated. And we shouldn't even waste our finance committee time on this. Thank you very much.
And Daniel McCarter, sorry about that.
I do before, here we go.
Madam Mayor and city council, I think the point's been made, but I put some thoughts together, and I'm here, so I'm going to share them with you. I voted for Measure B with the expectation that the funds be used to improve water quality and restore creeks for function and aesthetics. While I can appreciate council members' creative funding solutions, I do not believe that the cleaning of state street sidewalks meets the threshold funding criteria set forth by the Creeks Restoration and Water Quality Improvements Program, which was approved by city council on April 1st, 2003. A downtown maintenance program already exists, and the city has a duty to keep sidewalks clean. And the creek fund was not intended for this ongoing maintenance. Measure B is a special tax set aside in a special fund for a specified purpose, not a general tax in a general fund to supplement general maintenance. And I won't finish up, because I think that's...
Thank you. We actually have a couple more speaker slips. Rick Frickman will be followed by Kurt Zimmerman and Kira Redman.
Thank you very much. I was going to read the, the ballot argument that says that, the whole thing, but you've already got the gist of that. I just want to offer a vision that someday people will come to Santa Barbara to watch the 24-to-30-inch steelhead migrate back up the tree, creeks, the way they used to before all the bridges and barriers were installed. Thank you very much.
Kurt Zimmerman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Kurt Zimmerman, I'm the Southern California Regional Manager for California Trout. California Trout is a nonprofit headquartered in San Francisco, which is committed to the protection and restoration of wild trout, steelhead, and salmon and their waters, including steelhead waters in Santa Barbara. We have twenty employees, approximately four thousand members, and regional offices, including my office in Ventura. I appear this afternoon to request that the council very carefully consider, but ultimately reject Councilmember Rouse's proposal to transfer approximately $400,000 per annum of Measure B funds, and similarly to reject the suggestion that the proposal be referred to the finance committee. CalTrout's opposed to the proposal for the following reasons. First, because while commendable, the activities of the downtown organization are focused on the beautification of the city. They're not directly or indirectly related to improving, quote, "the quality of storm waters and other surface waters discharged into the Pacific Ocean to carry out creek restoration's improvements and for projects or programs to improve the quality of onshore and offshore waters," unquote, which is the stated purpose of Measure B. Indeed, some of the activities proposed for funding, such as purchasing fertilizer, can even cause deterioration of the water quality. Runoff containing fertilizer can cause algae to bloom in surface waters, which in turn can lead to eutropification or deoxygenation of the water and the depth of fish. And as you just heard, the ongoing and proposed pressure washing can cause water contaminated with chemicals and debris to actually enter into the city's gutters, and from there the storm drains and then surface waters. Next, the minutes of the city council meeting on April 1st, 2003, reflect that a unanimous city council with one council member absent voted to approve the Creeks Program Funding Guidelines. I submit that happened because the city council intended that the Creeks...
You need to wind up, please.
Pardon me?
Your time is up, so you need to wind up.
Oh, I apologize. I'm familiar with your, your procedures. Even the most cursory examination of the proposed transfer of Measure B funds reveals that its purpose is backfilling, which is, which is prohibited by those guidelines. And finally, the guidelines require that the project or the program identifies specific benefits, costs, desired outcomes, and measures for gauging success. No doubt to...
You need to wind up.
Okay. Respectfully, that evaluation is not yet to occur. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kira Redman.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Kira Redman with Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. We all recognize that times are tough economically right now, and that this has negatively impacted the city's budget, as well as those of many other agencies. However, Channel Keeper urges you not to, urges you to honor the city's promise to the 72% of the voters who approved Measure B thirteen years ago, and not raid $400,000 a year from this Creeks Restoration and Water Quality Fund. I understand that Councilmember Rouse has withdrawn or tabled the proposal for discussion in committee, and we would urge you to not do that and just say no today. The Creeks Program Funding Guidelines clearly state that Measure B money is strictly limited to funding water quality and creek restoration projects. Downtown organization salaries, parade setup, flags, and other proposed allocations of Measure B money are clearly not Creeks restoration or water quality improvement projects, and thus are an inappropriate use of Measure B funds. The Creeks Division has been able to do some great work with Measure B funds over the years, but we all know that that work is far from done, and that they have a lot more to do to clean up Santa Barbara's creeks and beaches. So please don't jeopardize those needed efforts by robbing their coffers to backfill other shortfalls in the city's budget. Channel Keeper urges you to refrain from diverting Measure B funds away from the purposes for which the voters originally intended. If by some chance you imprudently decide not to do that, Channel Keeper would also have to put forward our proposal for funding for Measure B funds for our organization, too. Thanks.
Okay, this concludes this portion of the public comment. And so what I'd like to do at this point to counsel, there are a few items, and I've listed them here, some recommendations from staff about no change at this point. That's the recommendation about the waterfront parking lot landscaping. Get direction on that. The Creeks funding about street sweeping, and there, the recommendations, do a study and come back on that. There's the staff adjustments, which is attachment one, which might be just a quick vote if we're okay with that. Have a workshop about the MTD and $40,000, and so we're not doing anything at this point. Have the discussion of what to do with Councilmember Rouse's proposal, and then the recommendation with the CDBG Human Services. Why don't we do that first, and then we can go to the services enhancements. But I would like to entertain, on attachment one, just to get that out of the way, this, this is the staff recommended adjustments. There's just a couple of items there. I don't know if anyone has any questions on it, or if that's something we can just approve right off the bat.
I would move we accept them.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, any comments? Moved in second.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, what item are we...
Attachment one, this has to do with the fleet replacement fund and the streets fund. It was in our staff report.
I'll be voting for the motion.
Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that part's taken care of. So really, at this point, is, on the rest of this, what direction, if any, do we want to give staff on any of these other items? I don't think anything else needs, requires a vote at this point. Mr. Samario?
I was just going to maybe suggest, Madam Mayor, the recommendations of the, of the committee on fees and the general fund revenue assumptions, have maybe the full council approve those, based on the recommendations of the committee.
And this is, right, so on fees and...
There aren't any attachments associated with those. Those are items, things that the, the committee heard are...
It's, it's recommendation A, hear and consider the recommendations of the finance committee, based on the committee's review of certain aspects of fiscal year 14 recommended budget, including proposed fee changes and general fund revenue assumptions, which was in the staff report.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Moved in second. Any other discussion? Ms. Mario?
I have, yeah, thank you. If you remember, Mr. Samario, during the finance committee meeting, I did say that I would vote for the general fund revenue assumptions, but that I believe they're very conservative, and I think we're going to have a little more money than you're predicting. I mean, that's your job, is to be conservative, but I'm, was elected not to be conservative. So I'm going to argue, we're, we have, when we go to the revenue enhancements, I'm going to argue that we go over that $430,000 a little bit and do my best to convince my colleagues, you know, because it seems like, you say the, the, you know, the, the TOT or the sales tax is going to be this, and then it's always more. And, you know, I'm looking out there at our, our library people, and, you know, the library was decimated in the Great Recession, and our parks are looking shabby. So, I mean, I don't have a really good eye for, but people who know horticulture and stuff, they say the parks are looking shabby. So I'm, I'm just going to fight for a little more money for what we need. Thank you. So I guess I'm going to vote no on that.
Do you want to split the motion, then? Or do you, for the fees? You're okay with the fee?
Right, I'm supporting the fees.
Okay. Would we mind, the most, the person who made the motion, can we do this in two parts?
The fees, and I move the staff recommendation on fees.
On the secondor, is that okay? All right, this is just the fees. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then?
Revenue assumptions, I move that.
And the secondor, okay? So all in favor?
Aye.
And?
No.
Okay. All right. Now on to the other items. Now on to the other items, if any direction, if any. That's, Mr. Samario, this is the only votes you need for today for this, up to this point. Okay. So to counsel any direction on the other items, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding the harbor thing, I mean, I would like to look at it. I don't want to commit anyway, one way or another, but I think there may be a way we could augment both the labor force, if you were in the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as find a better way, a more efficient way, to handle our gardening needs at the harbor. But I don't know that for sure, so I'd like to find out more. If we can win, that would be great. It can't be that expensive. Do we have an expense estimated on what it would be to send out RFPs?
You know, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we talked a lot about this internally with staff. The way it works right now is that the Harbor Department, the waterfront department pays Parks and Rec to provide these services, and it's a little over $200,000 a year. And it's a variety of Parks and Rec employees, so it's not just one or two employees. And sometimes it's a number of employees that go in because of specific needs. It involves, it pays for supervision, so it's not just the direct employees, but a small percentage of that. It also pays a little bit for the heavy equipment that they use. And in looking at, should we, you know, go out and do an RFP, it's a, if we had to do an RFP, staff's going to have to put a certain number of hours putting in and do a detailed specifications. One of the difficult parts of this is that there's the routine things that the Parks and Rec staff does, but then there's a certain number of wind events and storm events where Parks and Rec goes in with a number of employees and picks up palm fronds and, you know, and deals with those kinds of issues. And so specing that out is difficult. And then we looked at what are the potential savings, and there may be some potential savings. I don't want to say that there aren't, but does that justify going through this detailed process of doing this? And then in talking with the harbor staff about, are you pleased with the service you receive? And I can say, this has evolved over the years, and I think right now there's a monthly inspection process where the waterfront staff walks the whole area with the Parks and Rec staff. They have a checklist, and they go through what's working, what's not working. It seems to be working well, and do we want to, you know, with all the other priorities we have and with the Parks and Rec staff, you know, and the losses they've incurred over the last, you know, three, four years, is it worth looking at that with all of the other priorities? If the council directs us to do it, we will. You know, an intermediate step, to do a, kind of do a quick and dirty study to see what are the, you know, kind of get quick quotes rather than a detailed RFP process and determine, does it justify then doing a more detailed process? That's kind of an intermediate step. We just felt that, based on all the other priorities we have as an organization, this would take the Parks and Rec staff to do an RFP along with the waterfront staff. And then I've also got the issue of employee morale, that I've got employees who would be affected by that, and that this was still not a good time to go through that process.
No, you make a good case. I don't mean by any means that we're, that this should affect employee morality, because I'd like to use those employees elsewhere, if in fact we chose that route. So I don't think that would be an issue. And in fact, I think a rough and down and dirty, whatever you want to call it, RFP might be worthwhile, and maybe we'll stop it right then. We'll see, gee, gee, this is, you know, not worth it. But I personally think it might be worth a try. I realize that privatization is not a cure-all. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, so it really depends on the situation.
And just so we're clearing employee morale, if we took $200,000 out of the Parks and Recreation budget because they decided to contract with the private sector, we would either have to, through attrition or through layoffs, reduce staffing in Parks and Rec, or we'd have to come to the City Council and ask for additional general fund money to pay for those employees to do other things.
Yes, I agree with that. Absolutely, we got it covered. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Thanks, Mr. Armstrong, for being so complete in your response to the idea. And this is a case of where I just don't see the benefit of doing a speculative RFP where you'd not really be sincere about offering the job to somebody who's just sort of fishing to see if we can get a better rate, and what would we really be getting back in terms of response anyway? You know, the lowest bidder for maintaining the front yard of our community, and this is very, very important that this be maintained at a high level. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. I don't support the proposal.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It seems to me that the idea of pursuing, as you called it, a quick quote rather than a formal RFP, just to get, and I would say, look at the routine maintenance costs only, which have to be, I would assume, the bulk of the costs involved. Given that the Harbor Commission voted unanimously for this, I think if we can do that in an inexpensive way, that that would be a good approach. Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I oppose a quick and dirty look at this. Waterfront staff has said that they're satisfied. I appreciate that the Harbor Commission is acting as a fiscal watchdog. I think that's what you should be doing, but, you know, Ms. Kramer, if you say that you've brought this up in prior years and the answer's no, I think your commission needs to take a hint. The answer is no. There's not a political will here or a desire on the part of the administration to spend the money to look at this issue or to, you know, change what we do with our labor force. And bringing in private people to do the yard work of our front yard would be a race to the bottom on wages, and I would argue quality of the work. Again, the waterfront staff is satisfied. I'm satisfied. I hope four of us up here are satisfied, and there's, you know, no changes are recommended, and we need to move off of this issue sooner than later.
Any other comments on anything else at this point? Any direction for staff? Yep, well, unless there's, I mean, I'm taking direction, I'm hearing, well, I guess I'm hearing a mix of a quick and dirty for looking at a landscaping cost for the parking lots. You know, for me, before we even go down that road, it sounds like the Parks and Rec Department and the waterfront department really haven't had a conversation as much. This has come from the Harbor Commission, which, you know, they've looked at the budget, but there seems like there's still some conversations in terms of efficiencies that could probably even happen even before even getting to that point. So my, I guess, viewpoint is, before spending staff resource time on creating even something that's quick and dirty, let's have the two departments talk to each other and see if there are any efficiencies first. There might be, which is something you just can do in-house, and you have those conversations anyway, and come back to the Harbor Commission, perhaps, with that information. But it seems like we're kind of, we're acting a little prematurely without having the total information about, and I don't even know what quick and dirty gives us. It might give us bad information, really. We don't know what happened at storm events. What does that really mean? I mean, more you get into issues that come up, it's no longer quick and dirty, it's slow and clean, maybe, I don't know. But, so I'd rather put it off in this time and want to hear more from the departments if there's any efficiencies perhaps that we could look at to start with, but that's my... Mr. House?
Well, then, just so we all have a chance to weigh in, I'll move that we don't make any changes to the staff recommendation, and just let us all have a chance to weigh in.
Is there a second? This is just on the waterfront parking lot landscaping recommendation.
That we do what it says up here, no changes recommended by staff, and each one of us will have a chance to really, you know, identify our position on this particular point.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, just to make a mediocre analogy, if one department were to propose to purchase a vehicle and run it separately because they can do it cheaper, it would impact our ecosystem of what, one of our systems that is working, the whole fleet management program. So that's what, one of the main concerns I have about this proposal is the, this piece of heavy equipment that Mr. Armstrong mentioned. There's a, you know, X, let's say 10% of a year's heavy equipment work is then subtracted out of the Parks and Rec budget. And just, it's little pieces of a big machine that are getting unfunded, and that concerns me. I will be arguing in favor of bumping up the Parks and Rec landscaping contracting, money for landscaping purposes when we talk about that, and I think that that will help to talk about backfilling. This is one of those places where we have the opportunity to backfill, and we can be coming in around this problem here, this issue here, and perhaps some of that money would be used to improving, I'll be again discussing this later, to just be taking the pressure off of our landscaping program in general and be upgrading it. So that's how I will be discussing, it also will be, it's also money that's contracted out, which could be using help on a temporary basis, because we don't know whether this is going to be continuing on year after year after year. But right now, we have this little bit of extra money, and that's how I would be proposing, to be taking some pressure off this system. So, but I will not, I would not be supporting tearing down this ecosystem, this integrated system at this point of funding. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rouse, to the motion?
Yes, well, just because it is a confusing issue, because we do see how Parks and Rec staff is stretched, and Santos does an amazing job with what he's got to get all the maintenance done, but I also wouldn't want to compromise the system by eliminating the budget or cutting the budget down. So I wonder, Madam Mayor, if I could offer, or to the maker of the motion, something proposed more along the lines of status quo or, and then, not nowhere, but, and then having the departments, directing the departments to have this discussion with each other, since they have not done this, it's been Parks and Rec to waterfront. I wonder if we could do that, the maker of the motion, direct staff of the waterfront department and Parks and Rec to see if there are any issues or any connections that need addressing as they go forward.
Madam Mayor, I don't intend to change the motion to go down to that level in terms of administration. That's something that the department heads are talking to one another on a regular basis, and maybe if something were to bubble up from that already existing structure, I think that maybe that would be something we'd look at. But I'd rather focus right now on this particular proposal and stay with the staff recommendation.
All right.
I think it's implicit, though, that the staff will be talking to each other on efficiencies, but Mr. Hotchkiss on the motion?
Yes, I'm a little confused. It sounds like people are talking up here like Parks and Rec and waterfront, don't talk, and we're saying, go talk, so isn't this already done?
No, they, there are regular meetings with the Parks and Rec staff and the waterfront staff over the services provided, and they do look at ways to make it, you know, to do it in the most cost-effective way possible. And I also want to clarify, it's not that the waterfront doesn't also contract out some landscape, they do. There is landscape that's contracted out, and Parks and Rec, you know, contracts out some landscape maintenance. So we do use the private sector for specialized work as well. But there's regular communication, and it is, and I think it's become much more effective over the years as they've developed the system on a regular basis.
Okay, well, that clarifies that this idea of talking more for future efficiencies is a fiction.
Okay, we have a motion, basically the staff recommendation on this item. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Opposed?
That two? Is that right?
Me.
Okay. Okay. And then, so the other items, we'll get the Creeks funding and street sweeping, which is the recommendation for a study to come back, the MTD issue with $40,000 to have a workshop and come back, and the CDBG Human Services timing, the recommendation is to keep as is. Is there consensus on those issues, or does anyone want to speak to those issues separately? Yeah, Mr. House? I was going to say, if there's consensus, let's just move forward with it. If there's something that someone wants to change from those three, then we can have that discussion. Well, before you make a motion, so it's the Creeks funding, street sweeping item, and the recommendation is to do a study and come back to council about that issue. There's also the MTD funding, and the recommendation is to have a workshop, perhaps with MTD staff at a later date. And then the CDBG and Human Services timing, the recommendation is no change. So if there's consensus for that, we can move it forward. If someone wants to take something out and have a discussion about it, now's the time to do that. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was the, I was the one who brought up the whole issue of the Human Services funding, and I do think that we should be looking at that within the larger context of the budget. So I would propose that the option number two, which was considering it a year in advance, makes more sense.
Okay. All right, so we'll probably have a motion on that item. So before, okay, and any other comments on those three items, Mr. Rouse?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as having withdrawn that proposal, I was going to offer a substitute, which does have with, have to do with going to finance, but not specifically for Measure B funds, but for the predictable windfall of TOT, I think a broader discussion can be had.
Are you mentioning your own proposal? I was putting that off just for a moment.
I'm sorry.
But, okay, we'll get to that. Ms. Mario?
Thank you. I agree with staff recommendations on MTD and...
The Creeks funding, street sweeping?
Thank you. But I disagree with Councilmember Francisco on what we should do with the CDBG Human Services issue. I, Councilmember House mentioned earlier the expression, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So that would be what I say about the CDBG Human Services issue, and staff, that's what staff recommends on that one. And then I know what it's like to be in a nonprofit, and if we say what the funding is, and then everybody knows, okay, that's the pot of money and that's what we're competing for, then it makes it, it gives security for the people who are applying for that money, and as Ms. Gray was warning, people might come to us begging, you know, to add more money because they have unmet needs, and so it's just cleaner. Even though the money's approved a year in advance, we know what it is, and it gives us security and the applicants for funding. So I, so that's where I am.
Okay. Can I just ask council, are we, do we have consensus about the Creeks funding with street sweeping and the MTD workshops, both those workshops? Is there any changes to those staff recommendations that anyone has? No? So can we have a motion for those two, and then we'll go to CDBG? Okay. Moved, any second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of that one. All right, so back to the CDBG piece, and then we'll get to the measure, Mr. Rouse's proposal. So on CDBG, we'll continue that conversation. Mr. House?
I'm arguing for the status quo. I think real time is important in this, in that whole conversation. Putting it too far ahead or behind doesn't work. I mean, in the nonprofit world, you need to know what's available. You also need to be able to make proposals that are, where the funding's going to be available to you in real, in as close to real time as possible. I think that our current system works.
Okay. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would just like, appreciate hearing a little more discussion on that, because I'm not clear yet on the benefits or liabilities of the two sides of the question at this point.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the reason that I brought this up in the first place is that we, for the last several years, have been discussing the Human Services budget several months before we discuss the budget in general. So a number is proposed, and we vote up or down without having that discussion within the context of the total budget for that year. Now granted, you could have, if we voted for this a year in advance, and we considered it at the same time as we consider all other budget items, then we're looking at it in terms of how much are we spending on Parks and Rec, how much are we spending on police, how much are we spending on all of the general fund issues? And it's certainly possible that we could have a, an unlikely event, another huge recession where we had to suddenly do a 9% cut in the city budget, and that would necessitate a cut in that budget as well. That's certainly possible. But those events don't happen that often, and the entire city budget would suffer in that sort of a reality. So personally, I think it makes more sense to look at this item in, within the context of a larger budget discussion, and a year in advance doesn't make that much difference.
Mr. House?
Just, just real quick, and I don't know if it's a direct rebuttal to this, but the concern is that doing this a year in advance is not really realistic in the true scheme of the funding priorities and the changes that happen at the federal level, which is what we're really, we're really directly relating all of our choices and decisions about who gets what funding, because the total amount of funding will be changing year after year after year. We make, we would be looking ahead a year, that sounds great, but the problem is, it's always going to be different. So we're going to be doing duplicative processes, coming back again, and those who are beginning to try to expect how much money is going to be available and to anticipate what they'll be applying for, you know, this adds uncertainty to the entire process. So I don't think that going through this process effectively twice each year is going to be to our benefit. The way we're doing it now, I think, is working.
Mr. White?
I just wanted then get staff's comments on that, please.
You know, I think in theory, I think it's important to allocate the whole budget at one time, because it's difficult to take something out of sync and then say, okay, we're going to, we're going to fund this and not look at the rest of the budget. But as I've looked at this, what we used to do initially is we would allocate the money a year in advance, and then basically, we had $600,000, $700,000 of general fund money just sitting there, not being used for a whole year. And to me, that was a waste of resources. In fact, part of the way we balanced the budget five or six years ago is we said, oh, good, we don't have to budget that. If we were to go back to that, we would, in effect, what we'd have to do is, we already have the money set up, we'd have to then allocate another $600,000 for the following year. And I think the way I've looked at it is, is let's just say that we did have a budget issue, and we wanted to raise it or lower it. If you kind of look at materiality, we allocate $600,000 to this program. Let's say the council wanted to drop it by 10%. That's $60,000. Or you wanted to raise it by 10%, that's $60,000. In terms of materiality, it's not enough, I think, to change the system. And so that's kind of, you know, on a $100 million budget, those kinds of variations, if you decide that in October, it doesn't really affect the overall budget, as much as I, in theory, would rather have you look at the entire budget at once. So that's kind of why we think the status quo works. And if you want to tweak it slightly, the number five is with contingencies, so that if you made an allocation in October, and then we, you either wanted to supplement it, or if you wanted to make a cut in the, you know, in June because of something happening, you could do that, and we already have that in our contracts.
I was going to say, that is something that we hear about in the discussion anyway, is that we may be most, we both, actually, both ways. As I said, we would cut if we need to, or we would augment if we could. That's going on right now.
And we've been doing that with the federal part of the funds for the last four or five years, because they've been in such flux. But this is really, relates more to the general fund part.
So the, and the contingency piece, no doubt, you folks are looking at, you may not be presenting that to us, but you're looking at it anyway, and this would not be another layer of work to be presenting that contingency piece going forward.
No.
Okay. Well, Madam Mayor, then, that sounds to me like that addition of the contingency would, on the whole chunk of money, I think would be a good way to go. And so I would ask the...
So, Mr. Armstrong, would this mean, then, when you come back in October for fiscal year '15's CDBG human services allocation, if there was to be a contingency, we could have that discussion in October? And to me, it would mean if we want to raise the money. I mean, it's, right now, it's 0.6% of the general fund.
Well, when we talk about contingency, what we're talking about is, is that when the council then deals with the budget at this time of the year, if you wanted to make changes, because what's happened is, the committee has already made allocations, we're already finalizing the contracts with them, and so it, really, the contingency relates to changing the amount that's allocated in October, when you actually look at the budget in the context of all the other expenses.
Okay. Well, I actually would argue against the contingency. I think we have a contract with all these nonprofits. We don't like it when HUD says at the last minute that they're reducing the funding. I think that has a negative impact on all those nonprofits, so why would we do the same thing to, with our own funds that HUD is, you know, threatens to do each and every year, unless the contingency is to add more funding? But, you know, that's, I think that's a different discussion, and we can plan for that. I don't want, it shouldn't be a last-minute thing to add more funding to a process that's already been vetted. So, and the idea of going a whole year in advance, again, for planning for all these nonprofits, to have to wait 15 months maybe for a grant of $20,000, I don't really see what the value of that is. Whereas, you know, for three months, knowing that you can plan your next fiscal year, that the city money is coming, it leverages other grants. I mean, the CDBG thing does so much good. Waiting a year, I think, will counter that. And then, finally, if there was a downturn and we needed to cut by 10%, like $60,000, that also means the service providers are mostly, when we're dealing with shelter, food, I mean, basic needs, they're probably going to be hit too. So this money is probably even more important in terms of providing for those basic needs. So I think keeping it as is, period, is the best way to go.
And Madam Mayor, just to clarify, the one year in advance, that's the way we used to do it, and it didn't change the schedule. It just meant that the money was appropriated in July, and then it was allocated, the committee still decided in March, we finalized the contracts. It's just that, then we knew exactly how much was budgeted, and, but then we, basically then, they didn't spend it till, you know, we, the committee made its allocations in March, we entered into the contracts June, July, and then they spent it the following fiscal year. So there was just a year delay from when the council appropriated the money to when it was actually spent.
Right. So they're waiting a whole year to spend money that was appropriated before.
Well, but it was, every year, they went through the cycle, so.
Understood. I still think it's working well the way it is, so why change it? So, my opinion. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's pretty clear to me where the consensus is here. Mr. Armstrong, I don't quite understand the point about contingencies, the number five. I thought that that's already the way it is.
What happens is, is the council gives a preliminary allocation in October of the general fund money that's allocated. Then the committee knows what they get to work with. But it's always contingent upon your adoption of the budget in June. So there's already that contingency there, that if the council, let's just say that we had a 20% cut in revenues in the springtime after the allocation, we could come back to the council and say, you know what, we can't afford to make these allocations, so we need to reduce the contracts. So we have that ability now, because it's always contingent upon you adopting the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Yeah, I, oh, others may want to weigh in. I'm just, maybe for the point of discussion, I just want to move that we keep it as is. The, with the contingencies, I mean, there's nothing worse for a small, for a nonprofit than to be sitting on pins and needles, once they actually have contract in the works, and if they've been, they've gotten the nod from the city council, and they're moving forward, to have things be contingent at that point. And if I'm understanding, our piece of it, we don't have to do that, and I don't, I mean, perhaps if there was some terrible emergency, I'm sure there's, I don't know, but I just don't want to put anybody in that position. I really would rather us keep it as is, so I move the status quo.
So move option one. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Didn't we already? Okay.
No, we didn't have, we don't, okay. Mr. Hotchkiss, and then Mr. White?
If I understand, option one, you still, if we had problems, we would come back and say, hey, we've got to reduce things, right?
Yes, because it's still dependent upon the council. We haven't yet adopt, we will, we'll bring the contracts to you, you know, like, as soon as July 1st starts, because you will have adopted the budget, and then we actually enter into the contracts. I think it's unlikely that we would come to you after the committees made the allocation and make changes to those, just because, again, materiality, if we're in a major recession, we might as well wait a year, and it's, the amount of money's not going to be enough to where we're going to balance the budget on it.
Right. Well, I think this is an instance where you plan for the worst, it doesn't happen. So we're sort of, we could also plan for the worst this way if we have to.
And I, Madam Mayor, I'm hearing that we have a contingency element in the form of passing the budget, and so that that's at least a place to weigh in, when cuts as you, as were made four, three, four years ago, across the board, and then, yes, it was only a token amount, but it, everybody took the hit. So I'm game to continue on with the, with the keep as is.
Okay. So the motion's for option one, keep as is, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Mr. Rouse?
Okay, Madam Mayor. So what I intend to do is, trying to find a way, craft a way to make these little dots, connect the dots, make these work, and somehow, somehow get the problem that we've had for Parks and Rec resolved, that it's gone on for five, six, seven years, seems to be perpetual problems. And the one issue that I do see, that we can predict, is that TOT is going to go up, and it's going to go up dramatically as these other projects come online. So it wasn't necessarily about trying to target Measure B per se, but what I'd like to do is continue the discussion to finance for the entirety of TOT and the projected potential windfalls, not something that would have to happen within one budget cycle. But with a targeted purpose of getting Parks and Rec back in the ballgame, budget-wise, because TOT is affected by how our parks look, how our creeks function, how our beaches are clean. It's all connected, and I'm trying to draw those dots together. Now, as far as Measure B itself goes, you know, once again, I understand the passion. The language itself is not that restrictive. In fact, future councils could decide to do other things with it. So I think the people from Measure B, I think people conservative creeks should be at the table. I don't think it should be talked to the hand. I don't think, I don't necessarily say we should use those funds or reallocate them, but I think we should all be a part of the discussion. So that's really what I'm asking for, Madam Mayor, is to further this discussion regarding potential, or the predicted, windfalls from TOT coming forward, with the idea in mind that we could target bringing Parks and Rec, which is probably one of the most cut-up budgets we have in our entire system, back to health.
Are you talking about the Measure B portion of TOT, or the general fund portion of TOT?
The general, I'm talking about both portions, Madam Mayor.
Both portions.
Having everybody at the table.
So we're about to have a conversation about service enhancements, of which Parks and Rec would be part of it, due to funding that comes from additional TOT money. We're going to have that conversation now.
Okay. All right.
So how is this different from that?
Well, I think, I think because the folks in this room would clearly like to sequester the Measure B money and not be a part of the conversation. And my point is, is that because of the language, and if I'm, I don't know if I'm correct, I'm not an attorney like Mr. Wiley, but I think that basically, anything given Tuesday, it could be redirected. Am I correcting that, Mr. Wiley?
Yes, Councilmember Rouse, essentially a policy question, yeah.
Okay. So I would rather have all the stakeholders at the table than have somebody left outside, and then getting a nasty surprise like some councilman like me making a proposal to take their money. So, but we'll just continue this discussion, I guess, rather than make a motion, Madam Mayor, since I have pulled my proposal off the table.
Okay.
We'll continue the discussion as per your direction.
So we can end this discussion at this point? At this time? Okay. Mr. Francisco?
Since the State Street sidewalk cleaning is at the center of all this, and there have been allegations that sidewalk cleaning is actually damaging to the ecosystem, I'd like to get some, some staff input on that. I don't know if this is something that you already completely understand, or if somebody needs to do some research, but I think we want to understand. If, if cleaning the sidewalks on State Street is actually hurting our creeks, I think we'd like, we'd want to know about that.
Mr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Francisco, my name's Cameron Benson, I'm the Creeks Division Manager. I think if you look at sidewalk washing from a water quality perspective, or pollutants on the sidewalk from a water quality perspective, those pollutants don't become a problem for creek or ocean water quality until they're washed off. And that could happen by, in a rainstorm, but it also can happen by power washing. And so in the interest of water quality, you may have some benefit if you were to go out and wash the sidewalks, or wash pollutants off of a surface before a rainstorm. But the program, the maintenance program for State Street has washing on the sidewalks five days a week. And so some of the times that water's collected, our permit with the Regional Water Quality Control Board requires the water to be collected before it enters the storm drain. And to my knowledge, it is collected before it enters the storm drain, but the water is, depending on where they're washing on the street, sometimes the washwater goes into the, into the gutter where it's left to dry. So the water will dry out of it, the pollutants remain in the gutter, and that can be, that could be harmful, because then you have higher concentrations of pollutants washed down by urban runoff getting into the storm drain. Does that make sense?
Sure. Thanks.
Ms. Murio, and then Mr. House?
Well, Mr. Muldaver seemed sure that some of the water was escaping, and I think it's worth looking at if some of that water is escaping. But I support the way the State Street is washed now. I think some of it is paid with downtown parking. So I'm inclined to move that we, kill is a strong word, but just reject your proposal to change the way, Councilmember Rouse, with all due respect, to reject your proposal to change the way these, these things are done. We're having a budget hearing, and this is about the money part. So I'll be interested to hear what other folks have to say up here.
Mr. House?
Mr. Benson, it sounds to me like the one issue, this particular issue, about the cleaning of the sidewalks, water escaping from the cleaning process into the gutter, or just, or down the, into the, towards the creeks, that that's really a management issue. That's really supervision, management, quality control, just like with, say, our, the maintenance of our sewer system, or any of those things that we've been discussing, and the importance of containment. So where's that on your radar, in terms of ensuring that the processes that protect the creeks from that kind of runoff during the cleaning occur?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, that would be something that is normally reported to us. We do water quality pollution enforcement, and so we have had, we have had people, residents of the city contacting us on our, on our water pollution enforcement hotline to go out and do inspections. And to my knowledge, we have been out there, and we haven't seen the wat, excuse me, we haven't seen the water from the Downtown Organization washing going into the storm drain.
I see. Maybe what I'd like to hear, as a council member who feels pretty strongly about this, is that there, based on the things that you just heard today, if nothing else, that there's an enhancement to the, the training, or the, or the spot checking, or whatever it might take, to really ensure that, I mean, these are pretty serious things, right? And so that these things just don't happen, and if they do, there's some remediation, and better training, or whatever, but that we really take it that seriously, just like we do with the infiltration into our sewer system of water runoff, all these other things, so.
Okay. We do do, we do do training like that with, with other city staff, other departments, and we'd be happy to do that with Downtown Organization staff, who's out doing the cleaning. I know that when we've had those calls in the past, my enforcement staff has met with the executive director of Downtown Organization, just to go over those steps with him and identify those problems.
Thank you. And that goes right along with us having filters on our parking lots and all sorts of things to keep the water clean. I just want to, I, by the way, disagree with Mr. Rouse, although I like Mr. Rouse, but I want to just say, where I really see this coming from, as a proposal, having been a liaison to the Downtown Parking Committee, is a sense of stewardship that the committee members have for the parking garages and their ongoing maintenance, and the future, having enough money to be able to take care of those structures. And that's part of a larger and kind of different conversation. But it's important. They're concerned that monies, that they don't see the nexus for the funds from the parking system going to maintaining the sidewalks or keeping them clean on State Street, and they would rather see that money going into the parking structures. I, for one, can see a nexus. I think it's an appropriate use of the funds. But then again, it really begs the bigger question, and that has to do with the, our capital program and the infrastructure, maintenance of infrastructure. I don't think that part of a conversation should die. We need to find places to really continue to have that conversation and take it at the, in a different context than this. But I appreciate where the, where the proposal came from, Mr. Rouse, and thank you for keeping that alive, but I disagree with this particular proposal.
So it seems like there are two things going on. One is the core issue of what drove you to, Mr. Rouse, to put this proposal together, which is the issue of the street cleaning, MTD, and the downtown parking structures and its capital budget. And then, so that's, that's really one issue. And then the other issue is whether or not to use Measure B money to deal with some of those concerns. And it seems to me that, well, personally, I think we take the Measure B money discussion out of it, but still, there's still the conversation about what to do with the MTD shortfall, what to do about the future of the downtown parking capital program with the elimination of redevelopment agencies, and how to deal with a Parks and Rec budget that we still need to restore somehow. And I'm wondering, Mr. Armstrong, if that could be part, I mean, it seems like it's a bigger picture with that MTD discussion. It's not just that $40,000 shortfall about the downtown shuttle, it's the whole downtown experience, and how are we going to fund certain things? And I know it's a little scope creep there about that kind of, of, you know, conversation, but it's, that is connected, because it has, in terms of what the proposal was trying to address, was addressing MTD, street cleaning, and downtown parking capital. So I don't know if that fits within what you were thinking of when you were coming back to MTD, or, I mean, because I, we can make the discussion not to have...
Certainly, yeah, certainly Project Creep.
Yeah.
Because now you're talking about how do we fund downtown parking, you know, the Parks and Rec issues, and then the waterfront shuttle. I think with, with the downtown waterfront shuttle, I do think it's appropriate to talk about how we finance all of the downtown waterfront shuttle, and not just... waterfront shuttle and not just that $40,000 gap.
Right.
And then, that does get you into, at least to a certain extent, about the other support that you get, that we provide to that out of both the streets money and also support we do for transit out of downtown parking. But maybe when we have the discussion about at least the downtown waterfront shuttle, we can talk about all of that funding rather than just that $40,000 gap.
Right. Well, that makes the most sense to me, that, for at least the transportation piece, the downtown waterfront shuttle, to have that conversation at that point, which we agreed to do. Measure B money is just not part of that conversation, in my opinion. And maybe we can start having those conversations about how to fund those gaps. But, Mr. White, Ms. Murio, did you, I'm sorry, did you have a motion, or do you say you wanted, you were thinking about a motion, or was that an actual motion?
All move that we reject Councilmember Rouse's proposal.
Was there a second to that?
Councilmember Rouse withdrew his proposal.
Right, okay. So, I don't know if there, that's true. So, I don't know if we really need a motion. Okay. Mr. White, or, sorry, Mr. Rouse?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick point of clarification. This wasn't about all those. This is really about trying to restore Parks and Rec. This is, that's where, I mean, that was the beginning of where the whole conversation came from. But I had a quick question for Mr. Benson. And that is, if the sidewalk cleaning went away completely, if that was completely defunded, would you say that, so if those solids were allowed to collect and whatnot, and then we had a rain event, that would negatively impact the storm system, would it not, if we weren't collecting those solids and oils off the sidewalk regularly?
I think the, well, I'm not sure that that proposal was on the table. I think your proposal is to use different funding for two-thirds of the--
It's a question about the efficacy of sidewalk cleaning.
Yeah, so, I think in the same way that we don't clean other sidewalks throughout the city, we would have the same type of runoff coming off of State Street that we have coming off of Milpa Street and Upper State Street and every other sidewalk in the city, Cliff Drive, other commercial areas, as well as residential areas.
I would just argue that the, probably the foot traffic and the use of those areas is much, much higher. So, that would be, you know, a logical concentration where a lot of those solids and oils might be. But, you know, it's, I guess it's pretty hypothetical the way you look at it.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's the foot traffic per se that's causing the problem, but some of the uses, and those uses exist in other commercial areas throughout the city.
Alright, thank you.
So, Mr. Rouse tabled his proposal. We don't really need a motion on that unless there's any other direction at this point we need to give to staff. Mr. White, did you have something?
Yes, I did, Madam Mayor, because this is one of those conversations that we have had with staff privately. I mean, and I'm sure it's come up publicly in a few places, but I have heard Mr. Armstrong talk about the need for, in the long term, looking at the downtown as a, to be, in reinvesting in the downtown in order to sustain it, because it is the engine that is obviously funding the tourism industry, as well as our own touring. That's just the quality of downtown, is we're using it now and not investing back in it. And so, that relates back a little bit to what Mr. Rouse is talking about, not a little bit, a lot, of how do we sustain, and then, of course, my bigger theme issue about infra, our bigger theme issue about infrastructure, but that that downtown piece is a focus and needs attention and a plan for dealing with the downtown area in a way going forward. Everybody gets involved, streets, parks and rec, and so forth and so on, but focusing the investment in that core area, I think is, is a complimentary discussion to what you're talking about with MTD, for example. That's a piece that goes forward. And then, this looking at downtown and how we are going to be funding that long term, I think is a useful conversation to have sometime, let's say, within the next year.
Okay, conversation for another day. Okay. So, we have finished the first part of this. What I would suggest is staff go over the service enhancements in brief. We want to do the public comment for those who still want to speak on those items. And depending on our level of enthusiasm and attention, we may need to start the conversation of making priorities, or we may need to continue it at the Wednesday budget hearing. But I do want to get, especially through the public comment piece. So, you're welcome to stay or go as you please at this point. Does staff, or council, do you want a break at this point, or we just keep going? Five-minute break? Okay. Take about a five-minute break. Thank you.
But your attachment one, and I think we've also handed out that spreadsheet, so you can see the list of those options that would be funded from those budgeted surpluses. And then, I also wanted to just point out that included in your general report are the letters of requests from the Chamber of Commerce. They wanted an increase, or asked for an increase of $10,000, $955 would bring them up to $60,000 even. And then, the Santa Barbara Courthouse Legacy Foundation basically requested $10,000 for the courthouse mural. So, with that, if we could, I think you wanted to do public comment before you, we get into the actual, but we just wanted to show you the items here on the spreadsheet.
Right.
And also, if there's any questions about any of the items, I've asked the staff to be present from those departments.
Why don't we start first just with questions from councils, or anything on that list that you need more information about? I mean, they were discussed during the budget hearings, but just to be clear about anything. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going back to the, I'm not going to be able to jump from that colored piece on the screen to the, from the page, but I'll ask about it. And it is about the Parks Department recreational hourly staff. If I could get that, a description of what that $20,000 is proposed to be used for.
Maybe we can go by the letter next to the item, so item, letter J, or line J?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember White, as we are seeing an increase in both activity registrations and facility reservations, we are feeling more of the crunch from reductions that were taken over the last few years, both with permanent staff that process those reservations and registrations, and also the hourly staff. So, this money would fund hourly positions that would work in offices where we are providing customer service to people who want to rent facilities and register for classes.
And can you remind us what the change in either revenue or people, or give us some sense of that increase that's occurred in both, in, as I understand, in revenue, as well as in demand for camp services and such like? Do you have any?
Well, last year, and our numbers are tracking about the same, we had a 25% increase just in summer camp registrations. So, which, and that's placed part of the burden on us. And we're in the middle of that right now.
Yes, we are. Thank you very much.
Questions on the items here, Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a question regarding the visitor's center. And I don't know if there's anyone here who can answer this, but I was told by a constituent that in order to be one of the businesses that advertises in the visitor's center, you have to be a Chamber of Commerce member. Is that, does anyone know if that's true?
I think we'd have to ask the chamber. I'm not sure on that one.
Okay.
Ms. Murio?
Thank you. I have a question for community development on item A, and a question for the library on item G. Okay, it looks like community development's coming up fast. So, Mr. Casey, thank you. Zoning enforcement hourly help, what kind of services would our residents, or benefits would our residents get from that, if we funded that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Murio. I think it'd be more accurate to say it's the zoning section hourly help. Zoning is one of the sections in planning that deals with the front counter, with zoning enforcement, with the zoning information reports on home sales, and also with the zoning plan check process. Included in our budget, it was one of the sections that got hit the most, as we just kind of had to make our priorities as we had to reduce staffing and planning. And included in our budget is $30,000 of hourly help to help support primarily zoning enforcement. And so, that's going to give us a little more ability to do some zoning enforcement going forward with hourly help. It works really well. If we were able to get this additional money, it would help a little bit on enforcement, but it would also help us to be able to staff zoning information reports when we get busy, and it'll help us to hit the zoning plan check, which I think is a real customer service on our building side, when they get busy, so that we just have a little more flexible resources to hit those critical areas when they get falling behind. And so, from a customer service standpoint, we'd feel benefit from getting that.
And, Mr. Casey, if we start bargaining up here and horse trading, would $15,000 help you?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Murio, yes, that's the flexibility of hourly help. $30,000 gets you about a half-time person for the year, or a full-time person for half the year, from a zoning hourly standpoint. And so, you can scale that back, and, yes.
May I ask you about item C while you're sitting up there, board stipends?
Yes.
Some argument has been made that we would retain good volunteers on our design review boards, or that they're, they do so much work, they deserve to have some recompense. What's your opinion on that? I'm not sure where I fall on that one. What's so funny?
I'm just waiting to see what answers.
You know, we make the rounds to the boards and commissions with our budget, and we've talked about stipends the last few years. And I say that there are board and commission members who feel that even though it's a modest amount, it's a recognition of the amount of hours they put in as volunteers. And so, for some, it's a pretty important gesture from the city that what they do is valuable. I think there are a few others who kind of say they realize they're volunteers and it doesn't matter. And I'll say the ones who feel it is important, they say that the amount of time they take away from work, the site visits they do in their car, and the gas mileage, and that sort of stuff, they just say that getting a little compensation back from the city is appreciated.
And is it $50 a meeting?
Yes, I believe it is, yes.
And we're just talking about the design review boards, right?
Yes. The Planning Commission got their stipend reinstated last year, I believe, if not the year before. But the design review boards used to have stipends, and now they currently do not.
Thank you. And now, Madam Mayor, can I ask library staff--
Yep, go ahead.
--a question? So, item, gosh, where was it? Item G. So, Ms. Macias, nice to see you. So, did you do something where there was a half-time librarian, and you're making this position full-time? So, you did something creative, so that you're not asking for so much money, is that right?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Murio. We currently have a part-time librarian too in reference that works the reference desk and does collection development and other professional tasks. So, that $57,000 is the difference between the hourly person and the full-time person. And we would use the full-time person in youth services to help primarily with collection development for teens, also with technology issues, or programming and social media. So, and the reality is that we have been very successful recently in writing grants for youth services programs. And generally, they have some funding there for hourly staff. But we really now need someone at that professional level that can oversee the programs and really coordinate. Some of them have a lot of overlap, and it's so, it needs someone to look at it and say, oh, well, we can combine these two, or, you know, leverage this one with that one. So, that really was our thinking in requesting a full-time position.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, item L, free summer fund drop-in program was funded through a grant, so basically, we can just cross that off.
That's correct.
Okay, that's good news. Alright, we just saved ourselves $37,000.
But, Madam Mayor--
Yes.
--can I congratulate Councilmember White for helping secure some of that money?
There we go.
Or am I overstating it? I think you helped get that money. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Armstrong, when it has like an item I, for example, a range of funding, 130 to 195, what does that mean?
When the Parks Maintenance, or when Parks and Rec submitted this, that had a range, and so, and actually, in discussions with Ms. Rapp, her range is really zero to 195 or even more.
[laughing]
She'll take anything she can get.
The, there are some items that are ongoing, like new positions, and then others that are one-time money. And as I'm going through one-time, so I'm just thinking about longer-term budgeting, the two items in the fire department, that's one-time money, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, also, the, what was the other one? The courthouse mural room would be one-time money. Is there anything else that's just one-time? Or the expanded collection budget, is that one-time money? Okay. So, just to keep that in mind. Alright. Any other questions on the item? Alright, why don't we move to public comment? We have John Lynn, and thank you for your patience, to be followed by, is Margie back? I don't think Margie came back. She was from the Santa Barbara Education Foundation in support of the additional funds for the arts. And then, Leslie Wiscombe will be after Mr. Lynn. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Arts Commission budget. I'm John Lynn. I'm the president of the Santa Barbara Choral Society, and we benefit directly from the support we receive from the Arts Commission. Our mission is to serve the Santa Barbara community with classical choral music. Perhaps some of you have heard us on the stage. And our hope is to bring this music to as many people as possible, of course, and we also foster musical development and appreciation of music. Examples of the kinds of work we have done is after 9/11, some, more than a decade ago, the year following that, we conducted a requiem for the fallen and the service providers who were involved in that. And just a couple of years ago, we put on another free for, free-to-the-public concert that was held at the First Presbyterian Church over in State and Constance. Last month, we performed with the Santa Barbara Symphony in the Granada, Mahler's Second Symphony. And annually, we perform a holiday concert, which is a family-oriented concert, and a masterworks concert, which features classical choral works. In this, in this December, we are looking forward to moving into the libero as a new venue for us. And we will continue to offer pre-concert lectures, which help people understand music. We will continue to offer opportunities for students, seniors, and the underserved to be able to hear our music at reduced prices, and which brings, of course, the issue of money up to, right to the, right to my podium. It may surprise you to learn that ticket sales cover only 15% of our budget annually. Our dues that we all pay as members, as volunteer singers, only covers another 10%. So, we need to raise each year 75% of our budget. This, this support comes from the community. And this support comes from organizations such as the Arts Commission. They're instrumental to us, of course, not only in providing dollar funds to us, but also opportunities for us to collaborate with other arts organizations and other opportunities to, to serve, to serve this community. So, I would say that we obviously would, are very much in support of what the city can do to help support the Arts Commission. And I'd also be happy to point out that the support that's provided to us through the Arts Commission, the funds that we, we receive, of course, we spend back here in this community. They go back to everyone whom we employ.
Can you wind up, please?
Thank you very much.
Oh, that was very good. Okay, thank you. Leslie Wiscombe?
I got a quick question.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Lynn, come on back.
You mentioned some percentages, but you didn't mention the budget. What's the total budget?
Our annual budget approximates $200,000.
Thank you. Leslie Wiscombe? That's my final speaker slip, unless there's any others out there.
Aren't you lucky? Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. Leslie Wiscombe, I'm chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. At our regular meeting on May 22nd, the commission received the great news that the expansion of the summer drop-in, summer fund drop-in program for $37,000 has now been-- of the summer drop-in, summer fund drop-in program for $37,000 has now been funded. These funds are going to help serve about 200 more kids that were previously on the waitlist last year. And the commission wishes to thank Councilmember White and the generosity of the Woods-Claysons Foundation to make this a reality. This was really great news for us. For unfunded priorities or service enhancement options, as you're calling them, the commission continues to make the $25,000 for the youth job apprentice program a top priority with surplus dollars. This program provides youth with positive lifestyle alternatives through opportunities to receive hands-on training and experience in a variety of occupation, of occupational areas within the city. And finally, the commission hopes that a proactive approach to addressing the backlog of the parks department's deferred maintenance needs or expanded park maintenance services, as they're called, will be considered. For years, we have been concerned about the unfunded maintenance services and other significant reductions in this department's budget. While staff has done a great job in spite of the huge reductions, commissioners noted that we are seeing the impacts of the reductions in our parks now. Any funding to address the long list of deferred maintenance is critical to begin to reduce this backlog. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes the public comment. It's to council. So, what I suggest, I have a, one suggestion I'm going to throw out up front. And then what I think, what I'd like to do is maybe go down the line and if, one by one, you can go through what your priorities are. And I'll be listening and seeing if there's any consensus. We can start with the consensus, and then if we need to take votes on, you know, items here and there, we can do that and hopefully end with one final recommendation back to staff. But the one thing I just want to throw out, just to, as, as we start the discussion, I was, as I was looking at this, I was looking at both the arts funding and the courthouse mural room. And my suggestion would be if we increased the arts advisory program to 20,000, but that first year, take 10 of that to give to the mural room as a one-time expenditure. So, that's less than what they're asking for in the first year, but moving forward, it would stay at the 20. And, and that would cover the poet laureate, the, the arts, the gallery downstairs in the hallway. There's a number of other First Thursday things going on, the list that Ms. Brush mentioned before. But that is one way I think we could, if you're interested in enhancing the arts, that won't be such a hit in the first year, but it also then would give the funding to the mural room. That was one way. I was just looking to see if that could work. So, I'll just throw that out there up front, and I'll go through my, my other priorities after all of you. But, so why don't we start with Mr. Hotchkiss, and we'll just go down the line.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for throwing that out there. I catch it. I agree with it. I think it's a good idea what you suggested about the arts. The, all these are, of course, commendable and worthy applications. The one, the one item here that really affects all the others as opposed to just individual departments is the police officer request, the first and second police officer, because public safety is our first priority, and it really affects everything else. And so I would put that at the top of our list, start with both of those. And it will obviously ripple out throughout the entire community, but it wouldn't, just to refresh people's mind, put a motorized foot patrol, two motorized foot patrol people on state and other streets to address some of the problems, the ongoing problems that we have. Originally, I had hoped for four, but two is good. It's a good start. And then the other preferences I have were the visitor information center funding, and then you got my other two, which were the arts-related ones. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I place one, one of those two officer positions in my, in the, the package that I've put together, which my, the, the package I put together ends up with $49,000 in reserve. And so I'll just go down my list here. First of all, $110,000 to Parks and Rec for maintenance. The 20,000, I appreciate the mayor's comments about the mural room and arts, so 20, that $20,000. $25,000 for the books collection in the library. The 20,000 for the hourly Parks and Rec. 25 for the youth apprenticeship. And 11 for the visitors' center. And I am keeping my, 25 of my, my wish list was, was, is allocated to greater law enforcement at the next level down, either at the park ranger level or the, what I've labeled the blue shirt, yellow shirt concept. I know that Chief Sanchez said that that was not on his priority list. I still see too few blue shirts and yellow shirts on the three key spots where they're, they're supposed to inhabit. And that $25,000, by my estimation, would provide 50 minutes per day on each of those three street frontages. And so obviously, double that, triple that with each $25,000 increment, and you'd have that much more time. But that would be something I'd ask my colleagues to consider, and that would leave a little bit of money left in the reserves to start on that, our pattern of, of continuing to put a little money aside. Thank you.
Darouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, my, my first priorities are going to be the, the first and second police officers at their requested funding. My second priority would be the, the full request on the expanded park maintenance services, as I see that as being integral to the entire community issue. Third and fourth, I would put the two, fire department request for equipment upgrades. And then the next priorities would be both the option one and two for the library requests. And I'm going to withhold the rest of these till.
Madam Mayor, may I add one comment to mine just so, because it, I forgot to address Mr. Rouse's comment there about the, the fire department elements. Those and the Parks and Rec department technology needs, I think of as capital items, and that we do have in, is it July, Mr. Armstrong, or sometime later, that we'd be looking?
The tentative date right now is July 30th.
Okay. So, the July 30th, capital needs would be considered, and I would suggest that those items could be addressed then. And so would, that would be the time to deal with them.
Okay. Mr. House?
Okay. I'll go maybe the other way, because by leaving out these four things, we can accomplish most all the rest of them. So, I was, I was pretty convinced about the, with the chief's presentation on the, on the police officers until I saw this list. And at this particular point, I would not support the additional police officers in this budget, and I would not support the technology needs, $100,000 request, as was just mentioned, it's more in the capital realm. And then even though I know it's really important and needed, I think at this point, I would hold off on a building inspector. With those taken out, we can accomplish all the rest of them, except for a reduced portion for the Parks and Rec, expanded park maintenance services. We could be within the 40, $130,000 limit if we were offering only 86,000 to that. If we could stretch it, if there were some stretch in this, we could have 130,000 for them at a 474,000 level. This is really important to me. I believe that we can do more, and we need to do more in each one of these areas. So, going right down the top, the zoning enforcement hourly help, the, the board stipends, the city arts advisory program. And I, in my mind, I have that at 16.5, and I also have the courthouse at 10. So, they're both in there, because they can be afforded at that point. The city arts advisory program, I mentioned, at the digital microwave links and the confined space communication system, very important for the fire department, want to support that. Full-time librarian, expanded collection budget, want to support that. Some portion of the expanded park maintenance services, which I just mentioned, the 20,000 for the hourly staff for recreation would be included. The 25,000 for the job apprentice program, very important and high on my list. The 2,200 for the rounding up of community promotions. 10, 9, 95, or 11,000 for the visitors' center, and the 10,000 for the courthouse. All of that can be accomplished, and I think we're doing okay with our existing budget for the police, and I think that the other items can be foregone as well. So, I'm just taking four of them out of my list.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you. First, I want to make a, just a comment about the community development part of this. I would recommend that we do restore the board stipends, and that's not merely because I'm the liaison to the various boards. I do agree that the, the dedicated members of our design boards do spend a lot of time on site visits, and I think that there should be some compensation for that. As far as the rest of it is concerned, Madam Mayor, I agree with your proposal about devoting 10K this year to city arts and 10K to the, to the mural room restoration. I also agree with Mr. White's comments concerning the fire department. I do believe that we can handle that under the, the capital budget. I would like to, I support the first item in the library department. I support the first item in the Parks and Rec department at the level of 130K, as well as the youth job apprentice program, that's 25. And though I agree that public safety is our first priority, I would be willing to support one additional police officer. I think that's some, it sounds like that's something that could get support here. And until I know whether or not non-chamber members can advertise at the visitors' center, I'm not willing to vote any more money for that use. So, that's, that's where I'm at.
Ms. Murillo? Mr. White, did you have a question? Or Ms. Murillo says to do?
I'll just say that also contingency could be made on that.
Okay.
I can use that word.
I could use the word contingency, and there's 15K left over in what I just proposed.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you very much. My priorities are both items for the library department. The second would be in the Parks and Recreation Department, 130,000 for park maintenance, 20,000 for the recreation hourly staff, and 25,000 for the youth job apprentice program. In the community development area, the 30,000 for zoning enforcement. And I'm going to round it up. Mr. Casey, 38,000 for boards and stipends. I support the mayor's proposal of the 20,000 in the city arts advisory program with 10,000 this year going to the beautiful mural room. And I was down at the visitors' center not too long ago, and it was really buzzing. But I get your point, Mr. Francisco, about the advertising there. And with all due respect to Chief Sanchez, sitting in the back there, you reported to us that you were overhired by two officers. And of course, I value public safety, but during the dark times of budget cuts passed, the public safety departments were mainly kept whole while the Parks and Rec department and the library department really took a lot of cuts. And Ms. Rapp, is it right, 30% of the recreation programs were cut? And we just had this long discussion a couple of weeks ago about our at-risk and high-risk youth. And our locals do deserve a place in the library to study and find their books. And you're moving into the technological age. I see that, you know? So, you are responding to what the young people need. And I'm just, I have to sit here and be an absolute champion for libraries and for parks and recreation. So, I, I don't support any new officers in this budget cycle. Thank you.
Okay. So, for me, obviously, the arts and courthouse mural room, as I mentioned, I'm supporting that. I want to definitely, under Parks and Rec, the youth job apprentice program, the 25,000 there, the, the recreation hourly staff, the expanded park maintenance service, I can start at 130. I want to see where we end up, if there's any money after we go through a round, and that might go up, but we can start at 130. The expanded collection for the library, and I, I'm open on the full-time librarian, but if I had to pick, and I just don't know if we have, we'll see what the funding's like, but I'm open for that, to that. And I can also go for one police officer. I think the idea of the, the issues related to the waterfront and more, more like a beat coordinator, enhancing that, making sure that's secure, and that's well-funded and more presence, I think, is something we've heard loud and clear, and I think it's, it's worth one. I, I do appreciate Mr. White's idea. If we, if we have funding, if we, if we wanted to talk with others who wanted a second officer of maybe looking at the outreach and the community service liaisons as well to increase presence in the downtown Milpus and the waterfront. So, I'm open to that conversation. I, I'd like to round up the community promotions funding for the $2,272. I just think that's cleaner in terms of the grant, the, the contract that goes out to Solstice and Fiesta and so forth. I could go for half of the, of the visitor information. I mean, on, you know, if, if this is an issue, but I, I do think there is added, it's a good problem to have, that they're busy, and we want to make sure that visitors who come here feel welcome and get the services they need in the short time that they're, that they're there. But I'm open to that discussion. I think, and then I, to be honest, I didn't add mine up, so I should have. But for community development, I, I think the hourly help, and maybe if, if we don't have enough for 30, I could go for 15, because I think expediting that process through ZIRs and plan check, we're hearing that over and over in terms of lag time. And if there's something we can do to reduce that time during the building and permitting process, I think that would be helpful. So, those, my top, and then the fire department, I, I also agree, if, if there's not money left over at the end for this one-time amount, it should be a top priority when we do the capital back in, in, in late July. So, not to say no to it, but I just think there's another chance to fund that when we come back in late July for capital. Did you have something, Mr. Armstrong?
Yeah, we just wanted to clarify. We contacted the Chamber of Commerce, and they have an ad board where they prominently display certain businesses. And in that case, you need to be a chamber member, but they also have a place for flyers and, and pamphlets, and you do not, are not required to be a chamber member to have those there.
Okay. Well, that, I think that helps. Does that help in terms of your priority? Is that, so that okay with you, or you want to, you're lights on, Mr. Francisco?
I wanted to comment on another topic.
Oh, okay.
If you're done.
I am done. And what I was going to try to do is see where the consensus was, but go ahead.
Okay. With regards to community development, I only mentioned the board stipends, and part of that is based on a discussion that I had with Krista Pleiser, Government Affairs for the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors. And as, as everyone knows, they have been talking for quite a while with community development about zoning information reports, ZIRs. And they are going to be coming to community development soon to tell them that they don't think ZIRs are necessary. So, and if ZIRs are consuming, as I understand, 1.5 FTEs at community development, there might be some other opportunities for making these, these sums up.
Okay. So, let me see if I can go down and see if there are four or more of us who said something and, and put that on the board, and then we can see where we are. And by then, we might want to switch things around a bit. So, where I see four or more, so for city arts advisory program, I'm going to put 10, and then 10 down at the mural room, if you could do it that way. Then I also see four or more for the full-time librarian and the expanded collection budget. So, so line G and line H? I don't see the number at the bottom going down. That'd be nice if it could stay, but, okay. All right. Well, you'll figure that out. Let me just go through this. The expanded park maintenance service, I heard a range. Why don't we put 130 to start? I think we had, and then we'll can see if there's more there. So, put 130 in line I. Line J at 20,000. Line M at 25. Line N at 145. So, I see, I see more, I see four for one, but I don't see four for So I see, I see more, I see four for one, but I don't see four for two, so that could be a discussion there.
I think you're correct.
Okay. And the visitor information funding, most people said, I think, Mr. Francisco, were you saying full funding or half funding? Or I was open to that, so.
Full funding.
Full funding for the 10-9-5-5? For the chamber, now that we know?
I don't favor it personally.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought that was contingent on the answer to the question. So we had three for full funding, and I was saying maybe half funding. So I don't know what to put there. So maybe just leave it blank for now, since we don't have four first. Put half? All right, and then we?
No, half, go for half.
So go for half, all right.
You sure get your money back on that.
There you go. And you had the 10 there. Is that? So that means we've spent more than we have, so, okay. So now we have, now we can still have a conversation about some other things if we want to move things around. Ms. Mario?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to put Mr. Samario on the spot. I think we can bump our number up to 450, that that's really what we have to work with, right? TOT has been really robust. I think we're going to have more money to work with. Tell the truth, we're going to have more money to work with, aren't we?
I would never do that.
Sales tax is going up, property tax inching. Come on.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, $15,000 or $20,000 on 106 million is not a lot of money. So if you wanted to, if council wanted to bump up our revenue estimates by that amount, I would not have a problem with that.
Yay, what did he say, 15?
Well, he's suggesting if we have, there's 15, we're 15,725 in the hole, and if you wanted to raise the revenue projections by that amount, we can do all these things.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's, I guess, an option that would require a vote, and that would be a choice.
Well, it's a good option, though.
Any other, now that we're looking at it, if anyone wants to change anything, or you have different ideas about something, or you want to advocate for something that's not there, Mr. House?
Just a question, is there, are there any other things that are, we talked about capital versus operating, so it's kind of a big distinction in the city. What items that are on the list really fall into capital category anyway, whether we've selected them or not? What are the ones that are that kind of thing?
The primary capital items are the two items in the fire department. Those are both one-time and capital. My understanding from Ms. Rapp is that her technology needs are ongoing, so that's an ongoing expense.
The fire items?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so then, if we, if that were part of our capital program funding, looking to the future, that, we usually have that as a separate conversation, it's from the operating budget. Mr. Samario, where's the, where would be the venue for that kind of, for the capital program items like that otherwise?
Well, I think we were talking about, Councilmember Rouse, I mean, House, the meeting that's scheduled in July, where we have some one-time money, that we would have a conversation about how that would be spent, and it would presumably be for capital or one-time costs. That would be a time where we can discuss those items.
And these items that are under the fire department are one-time?
Yes.
You know, Madam Mayor, I would like us to consider, I mean, I agree that that's important, that was on my, those were on my list as well, but these other items that are on here, there's many smaller ones that all do make a difference. The zoning enforcement hourly help, there were a few of us that suggested that was important, and others down the list. If we were to really defer that fire department, those two capital, one-time capital items to the future for the conversation in July, I'd really like us to do that, and at least look and see what else we could accomplish. That would certainly offset my concern about spending the money for the additional police officer, which I feel others do support, but we could then accomplish many of the other items that are on this list if we were willing to do that. What's that?
Yes, it's on the list.
But it's, but it's, but if, okay.
What you're saying is to approve this and put on the top priority towards our meeting in late July, those two items for capital funding?
Oh, you actually, Mr. Francisco made an important point. I thought that, I thought it had made it on this list, I apologize.
Oh, I see what you're saying, then.
Yeah, that's okay, let me just keep looking at it for a sec. Hold on.
The amount, July 30th, the capital funding, approximately, how much are we talking about? One-time money?
Yeah, I think it's over $3 million, if I'm not mistaken.
So $3 million, so 100,000 we might be able to find for these two items. I mean, that's, you know, we'll see what, it means a lot of items for them.
We'll be talking about two sources of funds. We'll be talking about redevelopment, bond money that may be available, and then there's about $3 million, actually, I think it's a little greater than that, of one-time, basically, general fund money.
Okay. One other suggestion I'll throw out there, because I know three of us listed the zoning enforcement hourly help, and 15,000 would also help, was maybe to bring down the park maintenance service by 15,000 and add 15,000 to line A. I think that still helps parks and rec, but then it can certainly help community development, if there's any, Mr. White?
I agree with that.
You agree with that? We need consensus on that, though. Mr. Hotchkiss?
I was just going to make a motion, once you finish what you got here, that we accept Ms. Mario's optimism and adopt, as soon as we stop changing this, adopt, something happened here, that wasn't made.
Just put 150, just put 11500, yeah. There you go.
Okay, that we, don't move the mouse, that we adopt this as is and go forward. Thank you. That's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second. Well, I have a qualifier.
Well, you can second, we can, you don't, yeah.
Okay.
You don't have to vote for it, just to keep the discussion going, but I heard two seconds anyway.
I do support 15,000 going into that item in zoning enforcement. I don't think we're, I support ZIRs wholeheartedly. I have friends in county government, and they wish they had ZIRs. So I think once we really start talking about it, with all due respect to the real estate association, the Realtors Association, I fight tooth and nail for those ZIRs to stay. And we've worked so hard for some reform measures on it, and our staff has worked so hard on it, and I know we'll get to a place of a truce there. And if we are going to go for a new officer, I again argue for a restorative policing function on that officer. If we look at the statistics, they've put, you know, 50 people back into housing, 30 people into programs, they, Officer Hove and Burley, they put people on Greyhound and send them back to their hometowns. I know that makes some people happy, you know, send them back to where they came from. But the program has had so much success, I don't think anyone would argue with that wonderful function of a law enforcement tool and a social worker, and they really help people get off the street. So that would be my qualifier, Madam Mayor, about voting for that $145,000. Look how much money that is that's not going to something else, and I'm willing to vote for it, but I'm really hoping that my colleagues would consider instructing our police department for it to be another restorative policing officer.
Well, that wouldn't be part of my motion.
Okay. Mr. House?
So I was going to take off from that. I'd like to hear from the chief on that, if that were even a possibility. I don't, and just in general, though, I want to say, I wish you, others, at least one, and another person on the council would reconsider the police officer. We do, we have given the authorization to overhire, they have done it. We've got adequate force. Yes, it would be a great boon, I suppose, from the law enforcement perspective, but I'm looking at other things on this list that we could accomplish, and we can leave these capital items off, and we'll come back in July, thanks, I'm glad we've done that. But unless it were for something like Ms. Mario's talking about, I don't see I can support this. There's some really strong reason why you put motorized foot patrol in both of those, Chief Sanchez. Would you just explain to us why that was your pick as opposed to restorative policing? Because we do know that it's really benefited our community greatly. That program is phenomenal.
We currently have 14 people, including the non-sworn work in restorative policing, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And in my opinion, I think the best utilization of this officer is as a footbeat officer on State Street, working with the businesses, dealing with the enforcement issues that occur on a daily basis. And that's really important to us. And I think the business community, both in Milpus and State Street, would appreciate that. The restorative policing is covered with 14 people, and I think that we need the enforcement side elevated on Milpus and on State Street to deal with the enforcement issues and not into the restorative policing. That's where I would put them.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
So Chief, isn't it true, though, that the restorative policing officers do enforcement because they're out there on the streets? Don't they do some of that, sir?
They absolutely do. They absolutely do, if it calls for it. But what I would like to have is, when they do that, it takes them off of State Street, and we need them to stay there doing restorative policing and calling other officers to assist with arrests or transportation. The enforcement officer that I would put this to, for both corridors, but especially State Street in terms of the business community and the enforcement that we have to do there, would be basically parked there seven days a week and not leave, and deal with the enforcement. Where the restorative policing, when restorative policing officers do enforcement, they're off the street for at least three or four hours with each arrest. And that doesn't help us.
But wouldn't an enforcement officer also be off the street if he was doing, or she was doing, an arrest?
They would, but with the issues with restorative policing, it might take a day, it might take a whole day when they transport people to Los Angeles, Santa Maria, Salinas, and I think if we were to make this a restorative policing officer, an only restorative policing officer, I don't think the enforcement side would be enhanced at all. And we need, we need to have the enforcement side on State Street. I think we've seen that as early as last week, that we need more enforcement on State Street in the middle of the day.
Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it wouldn't be my intention to tell the chief what to do with his officers, and I certainly am disappointed that there's no, it's my day for unpopular ideas, that I would love to see the two officers requested going forward, along with the balance going to parks and rec, if that were my priority, so I'm not going to get there, obviously. But that's where I would go, because the community is crying out in a lot of areas for as much enforcement as possible, and as many badges on the streets as we can get. So I would hate to see this opportunity wasted, but at least, hopefully, it appears we'll get one.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick, on the ZIRs, my understanding about this is, the ZIRs came into being approximately 30 years ago at the request of the Realtors Association.
That's what you wish for.
And what has happened since then, as the law has developed, there are so many different requirements now on sellers, what kinds of verifications, inspections, everything else. The system has become so thorough that, in the opinion of the Realtors Association, the ZIRs don't add very much. So they would like to make them optional. And that sounds like that would save one and a half FTEs in community development, and that sounds like a pretty good idea to me. And of course, as far as the, as far as the police officer is concerned, I too wish that we could add two, but I'm sure we can add one. And obviously, I want that officer to be deployed in the way that the department and the chief thinks is best. Thank you.
I think the ZIR conversation will be a fruitful one coming up. The 15,000, though, I also heard was, can help with plan check, too. So even, irregardless of the whole ZIR debate, the plan check, expediting that, I think, will help quite a bit. And if we change the ZIR process, that's not going to happen between now and the budget anyway, so we'll figure that out there. Mr. Hotchkiss, and Mr. White, and Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I am astounded, it's actually 14 people that we've got in the restorative policing. I go to that court fairly frequently, excuse me, and it's obvious that a great deal of their time is not going to be doing traditional police work. They do have to get on the bus, or put somebody on the bus, or drive them down there, or make arrangements. These guys are working a lot of the time not on the streets where we really need somebody. I think Mr. Rouse's point that we don't want to get down in the weeds and tell you how to run your department, you make the recommendation, I certainly accept it, and I wanted at least two. I would say, I'm happy to report that we are having an effect. I think State Street is getting better. I noticed that the Crescent Crossing seems to be vacant, I don't know why. I hope it's you guys. But whatever it is, it's great, but I want to keep working in that direction. So I'm obviously adamant on at least one police officer. I'd like to add a second police officer. I don't think I'm going to get that for you today, but I wish I were.
Thank you. The tactical patrol force, the blue shirts and the yellow shirts, total 14. So that's where, and that includes Kelthove, Officer Kelthove and Officer Craig Burley. So I have Ed Olson, Burley, and Hove, and the other four on bicycles that are at the parks, the beaches, the downtown corridors often as they can, Milpus, that's where the 14 are. Just wanted to clarify, that's where those bodies come from.
Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, I'd comment that this list is one that not one of us would be fully satisfied with, and yet it is one that we are, we're headed in the direction conceivably of coming together on this bit. And I really appreciate that that's the atmosphere in which this is going on. And it's healthy, clearly, we're restoring some services. We also have been restoring some services, the furloughs were eliminated last year, so there have been bits of improvement to our funding, and this is yet another small step there. So I just appreciate the atmosphere in which this is being done, and as I say, I'm not fully satisfied with this list, but I can support it because it's a step in the right direction, and also, it appears to have at least the potential for a fairly strong vote.
Mr. House?
I just want to ask a question about the little itty-bitty one down there, the other request A, what the heck is that $2,000 doing on there? What's that about?
That's the mayor's proposal that she proposed, I think at your first budget meeting, that we just make all of the community promotion funding rounded up to, I think, the nearest thousand.
So it's like summer solstice, we give, I'm making up a number, 48,262, and I say, just make that 50,000, or whatever, or 49,000, or the Fourth of July thing is, you know, so it's just rounding it up instead of, because when we cut things by 8% or 9%, whatever, a few times ago, then you just created these odd numbers.
I mean, I would support that, I mean, so.
Hey, if I can get three more votes for $2,272, I just think it's cleaner. It's for the solstice, it's the fiesta, it's the Fourth of July parade, the, there's one, the film festival, because it's like 57,000.
That's correct. It is, it's the old Spanish days for 632, summer solstice for 149. It actually includes $955 for the visitor's, visitor information center, so.
Well, isn't that now in the visitor?
Yes, that's what I wanted to bring up. And then 536 for the film festival, so really, that number, if you exclude now the visitor information center, because they're getting additional funding, it's more like $1,300.
Oh, well, now it's even $1,300.
Okay, I would definitely support that, if the maker of the motion would add it back, and perhaps Mr. Hotchkiss would consider that. I just looked down the list here, and taking out the capital program pieces here, there's only two items that were on my original list that didn't get funding, which is the building inspector and the board stipends. And I just want to say to Chief Sanchez, I'm certain that what you're going to do, from everything you've told me getting up to this point, that you're going to have the officers that are assigned to those particular beats trained in such a way that they really coordinate well with our restorative policing division, and they'll be utilizing the, they're cross-trained in a whole lot of those skills as well. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'd like to hear it from you at least, that those people that are going to be doing enforcement in State Street and in Milpus Street that are going to add to the force are going to be coordinating with and enhancing, if you will, the effectiveness of our restorative policing officers that are there already.
Yes.
All right, then I can support, I can support the motion, and I would, hey, I'm good at putting words in people's mouths, all right?
Mr. Hotchkiss, would you be willing to add to your motion the 1,300? Do you want to keep it as is?
We're talking about?
Rounding up.
Line B, line A, other?
Other request A, yeah. And was it 1,300? What was the number?
27, 2272, right?
No, no, it's actually less than that.
Here we go, let's see the grand total.
1,013, six.
Yes.
Okay, so as the maker, you want to add, and the seconders, whoever's second, who's second?
Mr. Francisco.
You're okay with that? Okay. Ms. Mario?
Thank you. So Chief, you're saying that the two restorative officers who are on the street are Burley and Hove, and then there's four yellow shirts, right? No. Can you clarify? Can you clarify, please? Because you said 14 a minute ago, and I think the numbers come down a little. So can you give me the facts, please?
I am giving you the facts, Ms. Mario.
Okay.
I have six non-sworn. Some are yellow shirts, some are blue shirts, and the rest are police officers. That's 14.
Can you tell us the difference between the yellow and the blue shirt?
The yellow shirts, we have liaisons who are meeting with the businesses in the community, they're making rounds of every business every day. They're also addressing and approaching some of our homeless mentally ill on State Street, to try to get them some services and asking if they need help. The blue shirts are the three professionals who are thoroughly trained in the identification of mental illness and able to make a diagnosis in the field because of their expertise. That's, those are seven people. And then we have Sergeant Olson and four officers on bicycles, which is called our Tactical Patrol Team, who are all restorative policing-trained, but they're on bicycles. And then we have Officer Hove and Officer Burley, who are the direct contact for both of those groups. So Officer Burley and Officer Kelthove are really the foundation of restorative policing, but they utilize Ed Olson and his bicycles, all trained in crisis intervention training, and the seven non-sworn blue and yellow shirts, and that equals 14 personnel.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
I don't think I'm going to get support here for giving direction to the Police Department that that new officer be restorative policing. I would just like to say, I think it is our job to give that kind of guidance to the Police Department, but I'll be voting for this, Madam Mayor, as is.
Okay. I think we have a motion, and I think staff knows the two items for the Fire Department, you want to make sure we list on the capital when you come back in July 30th, so that will be something important. So we have a motion, we know what it is, we have a second, no other lights on, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We did it. So that means we do not have a meeting on Wednesday, and we do not have a meeting on Thursday. And Mr. Armstrong, anything else about the budget?
No, what we will do is incorporate all of these changes into the final budget, which we'll bring for you for adoption on the 18th of June.
Okay. Thank you very much, this meeting's adjourned.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I say that the youth council is having their end-of-year dinner right now? So if any of us want to go have a nice dinner with the youth, it's at Louise Lowry Davis Center.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.